So first I'm going to just let everybody know that the public access this meeting by WebEx Technology. The Burlington School Committee will hear public comments in person and virtually meetings are also broadcast on Burlington Cable Access TV. And video audio recordings are being made. The access to the meeting tonight is two three three nine four nine five six seven two six. And the password is Tuesday again. Alright, so the first item on our agenda this evening is approval of minutes. And we'll go ahead and first go for the minutes from five ten twenty-two. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Uh, aye.
All opposed? Okay, zero, uh, five zero zero.
Four.
Four zero zero, sorry. Okay. And then I also want to present the minutes from five twenty-four twenty-two as corrected this afternoon. Anyone want to make a motion?
Who isn't there?
Can we vote on it tonight?
You can have a rule of necessity.
I'll make a motion anyway. I'm going to accept the minutes of whatever night that was.
May twenty-fourth?
Yes, that.
Second.
Okay, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll abstain. Okay, so you're abstaining?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's three zero one. Alright, so I will bring up public participation, which is the next item on the agenda. I just gave the information on how to participate. Just a friendly reminder that comments are limited to three minutes. And I will start first with, is there anybody remote who would like to participate who has their hand up?
No.
Nope?
Nobody on that.
Alrighty, and anybody in the audience who would like to participate in public participation?
Yes. Yes, what is the issue at hand?
You come up to the mic and announce who you are, please.
Okay.
The mic up here, please. And please tell us who you are.
Is he the chair?
Thank you. My name is Patrick Moreno. I am a very long time resident of Burlington and a former teacher at Burlington High School. As well as twenty-plus years in various systems. I'm here to speak with regard to, and I'm hoping, and I haven't made a mistake, with regard to the agenda on Italian as opposed to Chinese. Am I being out of place here or? Okay, I have taught both French and Italian for more than twenty years. Both here, as I said, in here in Burlington as well as in Everett and in two other towns. And I wish to impress upon the group here that Italian and the study of Italian is critical to our society. More so, I think, than Chinese. This is the argument that I have been presented with. I hope that I'm understanding it correctly. I've been to China. It's a wonderful culture. As I say, I've taught French and Italian as well as a little bit of German. I don't understand how we can entertain Chinese at this time. One must learn how to learn a language. One must begin with basics. And you take those basics from your own language and develop from them. And you continue to the point where you gain a sense of knowledge in the use of the language. Indo-European language, whatever it happens to be, even German if so. Before one can get to the point where Chinese, which is not completely prevalent in our society, you can find right here in Burlington, I have friends, I've been here for a long time, who speak Italian. I have used the language. I'm sure that not everyone does. But the closeness to English, to our culture, is overwhelming. Chinese does not make sense at this point. When one has mastered how to learn a language, then it becomes a very pertinent question as to whether they want to go on to learn Chinese at the college level or even any other language. But the single most important point that I wish to make is that I believe our young people carry with them some of the information necessary that will enable them to learn Italian in particular, as well as French, if that is still, I'm sure, is being taught. It's a huge jump to Chinese at this level. And it's not used daily in the culture. And you may respond and say that, well, Italian may not be. But there are the roots of the language, the use of the language, the people who can speak it. As well as French, I think, is in the same category. So it makes a great deal of sense to me.
Excuse me, the three minutes are up, so if you want to just make your last sentence, that would be great. Thank you, sorry.
That's alright. It just makes a great deal of sense to me as a former teacher. I've experienced a lot of children learning languages. And if you learn how to, then you jump into something like Chinese. I thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Is there anyone else in the audience?
Yes. Hello?
And out your name, please?
Yes. Thank you for listening to me. My name is Alfredo Arnold. I'm a resident of Burlington. I've been serving several committees. And my, you know, I've served in the Disabled Access Committee, so thank you for listening to me. I know that you're gonna listen to me with good heart and, you know, openness as we all do. Hi, Dr. Conti. I don't, I'm not gonna debate, it's the same issue that we were talking before. I'm not gonna debate about, you know, Italian. I just want to read a statement that we wrote with four of our Burlington residents. And instead of, you know, I think we sent it, but we thought it was good to come here and show you, okay? I'm, my wife is Santina. She's working right now. She's a doctor in Italy. I'm a master degree in electronics. I just finished job. And a friend of mine, a professor from MIT, Jacopo Bonjourno, also can come. So I'm gonna read this, and we should be in two minutes for sure. Okay. Dear members of Burlington School Committee, we are longtime residents of Burlington and parents of four beautiful children that have done all grades from A to twelve in our school system. Nina Bonjourno is graduating VHS senior. Nicolas Bonjourno is a 2019 VHS graduate and currently rising senior at Brandeis University, majoring in biochemistry. Gaia Arnold, which is, she's here, she's driving me, is also 2019 VHS graduate and just graduated from UMass with double major in biochemistry and neuroscience and president of the Italian club at UMass Amherst. Gemma Arnold, she's finished his tenth grade. She didn't want to come. She was afraid of this, but at VHS. Our children have successfully completed Italian language program in the Burlington school system. Here we wish to express our strong support for maintaining this program in its entirety, sorry, from sixth grade to twelfth grade. We believe that this containing the middle school classes will result in eventually demise of the high school program. Because starting to learn a new language from scratch at age fourteen constitutes a daunting challenge for most students. Our support for the Italian language program stems from our personal time to Italy. I think from my accent, you might pick it a little bit. The rich Italian-American heritage in the Boston area, and I should say in the Burlington area, which, you know, I think is a big discrepancy that in Burlington we have Italian, where the other towns not. The evident success of the Italian program in Burlington, yes. And the recognition that a broad set of foreign language offering increase the educational effectiveness and effectiveness of the Burlington school system. I'm sorry, going a little bit fast. We understand that the Italian consulate of Boston has offered to share the expenses for a middle school Italian teacher, which should make continuing the program financially sustainable. Respectfully, Jacopo and Anna Bonjourno, Alfredo and Santina Arnold. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you Alfredo. We appreciate you bringing that to us. Thank you. Anyone else? I think you were introduced, but if you could introduce yourself again, that would be great.
So hi everyone, yeah, I'm Gaia Arnold. I'm also one of the residents here in Burlington. I recently graduated from VHS in 2019, and I'm also here on the topic of getting rid of Italian in the middle school. And I believe that by proposing to remove Italian in the middle school, you are severely decreasing the likelihood of fluency and proficiency in the language, or by replacing it with Mandarin. Studies have shown that there's a critical period for language learning. It's from about the ages of five or six up until puberty, so usually the ages of ten to twelve. A lot of studies regarding language use, such as what I'm currently involved in, are capping for a learning English language to be considered a native. An English speaker is twelve years old, so again, in that middle school age range. And I believe that if you get rid of Italian in the middle school, kids won't be able to proficient, uh, won't be able to get to proficiency in Italian once they're up at high school. So apart from the importance of the age at which they learn Italian, some of the others have talked about the importance of the Italian program. I myself have seen how much it has impacted me and I've also recently spoken to graduates from ten years ago who still speak about the Italian program and how great it has been. They've recently been to Italy. They're still in touch with Italians from the Italian exchange. And they think that it wouldn't be possible if we removed Italian from the middle school because they wouldn't have that background and that foundation to get to the proficiency they still have to this day. Apart from that, we've also touched upon it a little, but there's a really different learning curve than learning Italian versus Chinese or Mandarin. And so I think that would also hinder children trying to get proficiency in a second language or any language at all.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments.
Thank you. Just Madam Chair, before we hear from our final person, I just want to make sure I clarify something. Use, Italian is alive and well at the high school, so that's staying. I think we're looking at the middle school schedule right now and staffing. So I think we're looking at the schedule over two years. We just completed year one. I understand Italian, we offer four languages now at the middle school and we're seeing whether that's sustainable or not. So that's one of the things we're studying. I have received emails from the Italian consulate, so I'm aware of that opportunity. And we will certainly outreach to them with certain foreign languages. It really depends, student interest is a big driver of, on staffing. So it's one of the things that we are trying to make sure that we can promote student interest. Obviously, building a middle school interest helps drive high school interest. So we're sort of aware of that, aware of that pipeline. And we have seen many students gravitate towards Spanish. But Italian at the high school is still very popular for many different reasons. So we are not offering Mandarin at the middle school at this time. I'm not sure where that started or how that started. So again, I would love to offer Mandarin. In fact, I'd love to offer many languages, but we are not offering Mandarin at that time. Honestly, it's about sustainability, so we want to make sure what we offer is high quality and that we have enough student interest to drive the staffing that we need. So again, I just want to make sure we're alive and well at the high school. There's no Mandarin at the middle school. But we are looking at the middle school schedule to try to make sure that the choices we have are sustainable. And honestly, that is, French and Italian are, we need to drive student interest more towards those two. I didn't want to cut you off. You're more than welcome to come up and make comments. I just want to make sure that, I'm not sure where the Mandarin comment was coming from. So it was the first I heard of it tonight. So again, I was excited to do it. I just, I just don't, we are not doing that.
I'm Neil. I'm a VHS twenty eighteen graduate. Been a hot minute since I've been in the seat here. I was, I've been in the atomic, I wasn't in the atomic program rather, since sixth grade, so twenty twelve or something of that sort. And I still speak Italian to this day, which is, it's been a big part of my life since. And I think the, I'm gonna pivot a little bit since, since the Mandarin piece was clarified. But I think that recognizing that the relevance of, and I'm sure you all do, the relevance of Italian to not only like the culture that we get to experience every day, especially being in New England, but also how that, how much sort of commerce relevance it has. And I think as we look at other languages, you know, people, especially when you think about things like Mandarin, so much of the push from, even in other districts is around the fact that it's just, in terms of commerce, extremely relevant. But you look at Italian and you get to see that ten thousand US businesses are operating there on a daily basis. You're seeing that every automotive chipmaker, every, you know, eyewear fashion, fashion manufacturer is also, or designer rather, is also operating out of Italy. And so I think building this connection to the culture, the commercial relevance at a younger age is incredibly critical. Especially, really pivot from this Mandarin thing. But especially as you think about the learning curve, especially as you move into high school. So going in with a basic understanding, especially as somebody who's not speaking Italian at home, I'm Indian heritage, getting to go into high school knowing the basics of Italian allowed me to leave high school nearly fluent. And that's been incredibly useful throughout my life. And if I didn't have those initial two years, I'd frankly have to have committed to learning Italian in college. And I don't think that's a sustainable pace for most students, where you end up putting the actual proficiency where the language can become really, really useful on the back half into college. And so I think starting them earlier gives them the opportunity to actually become proficient and fluent in the language. And that's where I think these like long-term educational outcomes really become relevant. Because all of a sudden it becomes, I learned Italian in high school, I know how to say eight sentences, and you can kind of drop off from there if you don't have that foundation and a little bit more time to learn. And so I think giving, giving students the opportunity to not only connect with their culture earlier on, that so much of the cultural heritage that we built here in New England is incredibly important, but also giving them that, that opportunity to actually become proficient in the language is something I think that would be taking a step backwards if we, if we missed that on.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments as well. Is there anyone else?
Hello, I'm Anna Matthew. I was a twenty twenty graduate of VHS and I'm also speaking on Italian in the middle school. I want to piggyback off basically what everyone else has been saying, but at another point. And I understand the sustainability aspect, but my brother also takes Italian and my other two cousins also take Italian. And they all were students who were in seventh grade when the pandemic started. And so they switched to remote learning as they started their fundamental years of, or foundational years of Italian. And I sat in on one of my brother's first days in high school of Italian. And their language abilities were far lessened than ours were going into our freshman year. And I went, me and my friends, all we went to Italy and I was like astounded by how fluent I was. I didn't realize that learning all those six years had the impact it did on me until I was really put into that space to basically only speak Italian. I didn't speak English at all. The entire time I was there, the family I was staying with did not speak English. So I was really forced to realize how much of an impact Italian had on me. And I've seen already the impact that not having a really good foundation in Italian from middle school has on all my cousins and my siblings. So I just want to really enforce the fact that I think having Italian in the middle school will be really impactful for a lot of students. I know a lot of my, I have a really big family in Burlington and they all want to take Italian. They all like, have been talking about Italian and we've all been telling them about Italian. So I think there is still a drive for Italian in the middle school, so I hope it stays. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna.
Thank you.
Alright, anyone else?
Hello, I'm Caitlin. I graduated in the class of twenty twenty. And now I'm a student at Boston University and I'm still studying Italian. Well, I'm sorry, I'm talking about the Italian issue today. And something I realized is that, or something that I think a lot of people fail to realize is how just wonderful the Italian program in Burlington is. It starts at such an early age as of right now. And we just really went through in a way that I feel like everyone really understood the fundamentals of the language. And then we dove deep into culture and this more nitty gritty. And in college, in something that I realized in Italian classes is that with people who just started learning in high school or people who just started learning in college and had only done four semesters, I was in three hundred level classes and I had such a leg up on everyone because I was relearning things that had already been introduced to my senior year and something that my teachers had already taught us. And it was just very interesting to see the differences in when people learn languages and how that can help them later on. So in the early intervention, it's sort of very important to remember and to think about. And it really does have an effect long term. So I think that it is great to have as many languages as you can at as early ages as you can because it is really the best way to have long-term results. It really help out in any stage of life, so I really hope it does stay. Thank you.
Thank you Caitlin. Anyone else want to pop up and comment? Alright, was there another gentleman I thought?
Good evening, School Committee. My name is Sean Musselman. I've come to you as an educator and a parent today. And good evening to the Burlington community watching at home. For those who do not know my role in the Burlington Public Schools, I'm a K-five Science and Social Studies Curriculum Specialist for the district. And I am now the President-elect for the Burlington Educators Association. I want to start by expressing appreciation and gratitude toward this body for finding both consensus and compromise in the tentative agreement reached with the BEA and our contract. I'm also grateful for the full-throated support we received from so many of our Burlington community members. I'm under the impression that the Fair Share Amendment is being discussed today by your body. Fair Share Amendment being discussed is an opportunity to continue to do our community and its educators right. It is an opportunity to take a bite out of the rapidly growing inequality being felt here in Burlington and across the state, which has only been exacerbated by the pandemic. I'm under the impression that this body has dutifully consulted its top tax lawyer regarding whether or not to publicly endorse this legislation. While I cannot know what such guidance offers, I do know that legalese and matters of practicality can sometimes cloud what is glaring. The Fair Share Amendment asks millionaires and billionaires, most of who at minimum take home upwards of twenty thousand dollars a week, to more aptly pay into transportation that moves their goods and employees across the Commonwealth. Equally important, the funds this amendment generates will be prioritized to benefit our schools from which those same employees graduate from. Please take these sums of money into context. We all just painfully endured the clamor of our community's Facebook page over whether or not our teachers earn an annual sum even most modest millionaires make in a month. Broadly speaking, an overwhelming majority of our community makes less than one-tenth of the annual take-home pay this revenue reform targets. To sum, this body's vote on whether or not to endorse the Fair Share Amendment will be a referendum on its commitment to equity as well. Our state's current flat taxed, uh, flat income tax is a model of equality that leaves many unfairly punished by poor policy. While many Burlington citizens are seeing their savings slip with every energy payment they will make this summer, the most affluent carry on less impacted, some even contemplating when best to buy the dip or activate a company stock buyback, as I most recently read in the newspaper, The Wall Street Journal, this past month. This will boost their long-term income and lurch the inequality gap even further. So I reiterate that the Fair Share Amendment being discussed today is an opportunity to continue to do our community and its educators right. It presents an opportunity to gently retip the scales back in favor of its citizens and reinvest in our growing schools and student body. I encourage you to look at this amendment for what it is at its heart and vote yes in favor of its endorsement. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Musselman. Anyone else? And there's no one remote, right, so?
No hands are raised, no.
Alright, good. So we are going to move on to the next section. And it's information reports, any subcommittee reports? Is it Brooke online or any, I don't know whose student, if there's a student representative telling?
I did not see Brooke online.
Okay. And I do believe, Ms. Simon, you wanted to make an announcement real quick in this section?
Yes, some of you are aware that there's an annual conference for school committee members and superintendents. And I've attended it many years. I found it incredibly valuable. It's during the week, so it's not always something that everyone can attend. And I've tried to bring back information. But it was brought to my attention that the mailing I got from the organization MASC in Massachusetts, Association of School Committees, did not get to all of you. So I wanted to make sure that everyone here knew about it. It's November second to fifth. So again, it's a weekday. It's not an option for some people. But there's a lot of really interesting information. And there's a deadline for getting the less expensive expense. So I wanted to just make that announcement. I am gonna plan to go again this year. I have the luxury of being retired now, so I can do that. But I will share the details with everyone who is interested in finding out more about the kinds of workshops they'll be doing.
Thank you. Maybe you can scan that.
Yeah, I'll send it to everybody, okay?
Alright, thank you very much. Okay. Ways and Means is next. Mr. Riggs?
Um, nothing for me, thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. And we'll go on to the next thing, which is learning. Dr. Conti.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have some students we wanted to recognize. And we were just reflecting with Miss Crossman who's in the audience that many of our activities were compressed this year. So normally these would be spread out, so I appreciate the committee's patience. And I do appreciate everyone being here. So we had many students perform exceptionally well in the DECA Challenge. And we asked that they report to us after they participated in their event in Florida. So I believe we have Krista Anderson and Danielle Truve online, Bob. At least I hope. Okay, so we'll try to do this in a hybrid way. So all the teachers recognize how difficult this is, so they always say, see, I told you so, and I get that. So Bob, if they pop up, that's great. The next group of students that we wanted to recognize, we had several representatives here in person. I believe we have others online, are the students who participated in the Tenacity Challenge. We've had the Tenacity Challenge team in front of us, I think, for two or three years. And so wanted to congratulate them and hear about this year's challenge. So with that, I would like to introduce Judy Crossman. Judy, if you want to come up and introduce your students here, the team. And I think you have some slides for the committee as well? Please grab a chair. That's fine.
If you could move the mic closer to you if you want, just, doesn't have to get to the table. Thank you, Dr. Conti.
Bob, will it project on the other TV?
Yes, please introduce yourselves and let's go.
I'm Judy Crossman. I'm an English teacher at the high school and an advisor with Christina Chang for the Tenacity Challenge. I'm gonna talk a little bit and then the kids will, will take over.
If you don't speak into the microphone, no one on the line. Yeah, we can't, yeah, we can't hear you. That's why I said to move it forward.
Is the green light on?
Yes.
Is that better? Yeah?
Yeah, probably like six inches away.
Yeah, yeah, real close, real close. Alright.
So the, the Tenacity Challenge is an academic scholarship competition for teams of Black and Latinx students. Christina and I have been taking students to the competition since about 2014. I think it's in its 10th year. It was started by John Sills, then superintendent of Bedford. It was started by um John Sills, then superintendent of Bedford, um about ten years ago. Um, he still continues to um to participate in running it and as does Akil Montazir, who I think some of you know from his his work in the middle school and the high school. Uh, so um, are you able to go to the the next slide? So and if you could just, you can just kind of flip through the slides. Um, that's a great shot of of the the students who participated this year. Um, and if you go to the next slide, we we ended up with three teams um of of fifteen students who who participated um from uh freshmen all the way through seniors. So we're gonna have a a great year next year as we continue to build and grow. Um, and if you go to the next slide, you'll see that there are four challenges that the students participate in. Each group participates in the math challenge, the literature response challenge where they read a book. They read, each of the three groups read the same book, which was Don't Ask Me Where I'm From by Jennifer DeLeon, who's a a very local author. Uh, she lives in um outside of Boston. And um, uh, history argument and there's an art challenge. Um, and the students, I think, are gonna talk a little bit more about some of those challenges. Um, if you go to the the next slide, that that's the the literature prompt, which is asking students to think about uh what it means to be American um through the lens of of the main character. They had to create a um a video response to this question. Um, and on the next slide, you'll see that we we brought in a number of speakers. Um, I think Andy will talk a little bit more about some of them. This is Anthony Febo. He's a local poet who came in and did spoken word with the students. Um, and on the next slide, you'll see the history prompt. There's a lot of words on that slide, but what it boils down to is is students had to uh think about um the some new voting laws and really grapple with the question of whether these laws are designed to protect or to suppress and to create an an argument based on that that thesis question. Uh, and to help them do that, we brought in four different speakers. In the next four slides, um you'll see some of the speakers and the variety. We had the legal director of the ACLU of Kentucky, um who spoke with students. Uh, Dr. Kelly Carter Jackson is a professor at uh Wellesley College. Ken Gordon, our our local state rep. And um Jen Ramos, who joined us from Texas, where she works for an organization that works on um increasing civic participation for the Latinx community. So the next few slides are just images of our students at work. Um, and before I turn it over, I I'd like to to tell you a little bit about why I do this, why I've been an advisor for all these years. Um, it's, I think, one of the best parts of my school year. Students participate with joy. Their curiosity is authentic. Uh, it provides an opportunity for um affinity groups, um students working with kids who are like them and um getting to to connect and make connections um across grade levels, students they may not otherwise have had an opportunity to meet. So for me, as a teacher, it like, it sort of fills my bucket. It energizes me. Um, and and I'm just, I think Christina and I, if she were here, she'd say the same thing. We're we're really proud of them because this is a lot of work. It's it's a lot of work on top of the academic horseload that that they already carry. And in fact, uh tomorrow starts um uh final exams for these students. So just the fact that they are here, um willing to share some some time to to tell us um to tell you about about their participation. So they are are great students and we're proud of them. So Andy, do you wanna talk a bit?
Yeah. My name is Andy. I was part of the Tenacity Group. Um, my group, you know, with me, you're like, with me, this art piece over here. Um, like for the, from my experience, Tenacity was actually really fun. And um for this, like for this group, like for Tenacity, we like, we like met a lot of like people for like in like Google meets. We met, um, as you can see on the slides, we met the four people that you saw. And they like talked about like all about like tax frauds and like voting for like voting rights and all that. Um, for, oh, yeah, I feel nervous.
Take a deep breath. You're doing great.
As I was talking about, like the four people we met, um, they talked about like the voting rights. And like for the history challenge, we had to do a presentation about like all the stuff that we learned about. And Mrs. Crossman and Mrs. Chang, they introduced us with with the sources of the four people that you saw. And that like helped us a lot. And for like, as you can see in the math challenge, as you can see, it says SAT math, so it was kind of difficult. But it was kind of fun because like we had a lot of joy of like trying to like figure out what we had to do for like the answers. And yeah.
Andy, what year are you?
Uh, I'm a sophomore.
Excellent. You looking forward to the Tenacity Challenge next year?
Yeah, I am.
That's awesome. And what did you learn from participating this year that you think you'll change for 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 next year? Because um, um, Ms. Crossman, sorry, I'm gonna call you Judy, but I've heard there's a lot of learning actually at the event itself. Is that, so what what did you take away from the from the weekend at at Bedford High School?
Um, what I learned was probably like getting to know other people that were there. And it was like, it was kind of early in the morning, but like but like, you know, I was kind of nervous because like we, like my group, we had to do a presentation for the history. So like, we kind of learned about like how to like speak in public and yeah.
So you'll take some of those with you next year, the lessons next year and and feel like, so that's that's-
Probably trying to win.
Yeah, of course. So thank you for sharing that.
You did great. Thank you so much.
Oh, my name is Ethan Jean Baptiste. I'm a sophomore at VHS and I was also on Andy's team. We were on the Essential Six. And the Tenacity Challenge was fun because you got to interact with a lot of students that you really wouldn't interact with normally, even though there's clubs at the school, the time is limited, but Tenacity Challenge, like, but you actually know the students on your team. Even like, you could have students on your team that you didn't really talk to, like outside of Tenacity, but you get closer to them as you collaborate more. And you even collaborate a lot with the other teams, because we like all talk a lot and help each other. And it's like a fun environment because we can all be ourselves, but it was also, it was a lot of work, but it did pay off. Even like the art challenge is based off of the history challenge, so we had to relate it to the um, we had to relate it to the history challenge about voter fraud and if it's actually helping to prevent voter fraud or if it's for other reasons. And also at the Tenacity Challenge, we did do a lot of learning. As Andy said, we did get to talk to a lot of other students from other schools and you see a lot of kids that look like you. And for like me, it's not often that you see that in like a place in this general area. So and it was fun, like especially seeing a lot of the students present, like I think it was the top three of, for, I know for history and for English, I think it was the top three teams, they presented in front of everybody in the challenge. And you would learn a lot. And even when we were in the school and we got to meet with the representatives and the guest speakers, you, like, there's some stuff that I learned that I I actually found like really interesting and I didn't know a lot about. So I think overall it was a good experience and I will do it next year.
You will. That's awesome. And so and you feel like you'll be better prepared from watching the other teams as well?
Yes.
That'd be great. Um, did you get to choose as a team your position on voter rights or did you get assigned a position?
So you get for the Tenacity Challenge is really based off of what you want to do. You don't really get assigned anything. Like, it's really about your opinion. And like for us, our team, we all like, the way we did it was we all talked to people on our team and we saw where we stood with that. And Ms. Crossman and Ms. Chang made it like an important thing to say that like you have to respect other people's opinions, even if you don't agree with them. But we all like took our opinions into matter and we decided as a group what position we wanted to take with that part of the challenge.
And that's essentially what the committee in front of you has to do all the time as well. So they they have to um discuss their opinions. Did everyone share the same opinion um at first or did you, did you have to work together to reach a consensus?
On our team, mainly everybody, well, everybody did have the same opinion on our team.
So that, that's very good. So again, we're excited now for next year for you all to come back as juniors. I promise we won't schedule this on the night before exams, so we can do that. And and we'll see what the other, what the what the next uh questions are. Same categories, Ms. Crossman, but different different questions that are sort of uh timely?
Yeah, every year they come up with a new history challenge and new books to choose from for the literature. So yeah, we'll wait and see. We wait with beta breath to find out what we need to get ready for. Um, I'm not sure if they're, Mr. Conti, are you able to see if there's any students? Because we we had a couple of students who said they might join virtually.
There's a Vivian. Nate?
Maybe not.
Elizabeth Mellow?
Nope.
So. So again, the question then the committee would ask um is, uh, what can we do to to help if 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 anything, uh, moving forward?
I think continued support. Um, this year, um, and I forgot to mention at the beginning that this year we had more faculty involved, which was wonderful. Um, we had Sherrod Andrew Fee talk to the students about data analysis as they were working through uh the history question, which was really helpful. Um, Connor Pastizzi um and Shannon Genovitz both helped with the literature response. And um Stephanie Fischel helped with um history. So the, what we would like to see is more teachers, if possible, um, bringing these questions that the these students are are grappling with into the curriculum, because I think that that would benefit all students. Um, these are questions that affect, you know, a group much larger than than um than our Tenacity students. So um I think any support in in making that happen would be would be wonderful.
Okay. So we'll certainly start this conversation earlier than June uh next year, so that can be helpful. Uh, Andy and Ethan, thank you very much for coming out the night before your exams and uh good luck. And uh the school year is rapidly coming to an end, so that'll bring smiles to your face, right? So you're excited for summer, I hope. So uh, so thank you very much for coming out and uh again, congratulations at representing um all of the students on the Tenacity Challenge. And um, Ms. Crossman, please uh thank Ms. Chang and uh we'll thank all the other teachers, but just what an amazing job. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Hope to see you next year.
Incredible, Merrill. Mr. Merrill's great.
Nice job, guys.
I also loved your team names. That was nice.
Yeah, I did too. Alright, uh, so the next item on the agenda.
Uh, Madam Chair, I'm sorry, can I maybe take uh some other students out of order just because they have um
Exams.
They have exams.
That sounds good to me.
So um, we have another student group um under Equity and um
Okay.
We have the Student Advocacy Room and I believe that they are going to be virtual. We have um two teachers that coordinate the advocacy room. We have Greg Stringer and Jackie Rogers. And I also know that uh Mr. Porch also works closely and Mr. Larkin works closely with this group as well. So I'm not sure who is going to do the introduction. Is uh Mr. Stringer?
He's on.
He's on, so maybe I'll pass it to Mr. Stringer and Ms. Rogers. And then uh Mr. Porch, um, please, please jump in. Um, and I can't really see people, so I'm kind of waiting this.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead. Uh, educators, do your thing. Alright.
Alright, thank you so much for the introduction. I have a few students who submitted statements and also a few, I believe, who are here with us virtually. Mr. Stringer, I I trust you to be a bit more Texan-y than myself. I don't know if you want to share the slides or I can.
I'm happy to. I don't think we have permission to.
Oh, okay, got it. I see. Let me see.
Bob, can I send it to you?
Yeah.
Go ahead and jump on.
Greg, if you send it to me, I'll throw it up right now.
Okay. So while they're getting that situated and 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 Jaclyn and and Greg, you guys don't mind, I'mma I'mma just kind of give a little bit of an overview.
Right.
This this program was a one that like that Patrick Larkin um did a lot of research on prior to my arrival. And, you know, when I was transitioning in, he told me a lot about it. Um, the hope originally was this design was for for in-person and 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 Ms. Rogers and Mr. Stringer did an unbelievable job of coordinating kind of a a hybrid version of the advocacy room, where students learned so much and had a wonderful time. One, getting to know each other through the work, which is which is really tricky um for young people this age, these complex topics. Um, but they did a phenomenal job facilitating the space while also, you know, creating some wonderful learning. And um, learning that's gonna serve students well outside of school as well. There's just critical thinking, which is important, growth mindset, which is super important, believe it or not, for young people who who decide to venture on beyond um certain spaces and, you know, um that they just did such a great job of sharing with each other and building great relationship and while also doing some tremendous learning. Um, the facilitator of the program, I'll let I'll let Ms. Rogers and Mr. Stringer speak to her. She was amazing. Um, Mr. Larkin and I sat in on many, many sessions and learned with students and learned from students. It was just an amazing experience. So um, I just wanted to give a little bit of an overview of that. Thank you two. You guys did a phenomenal job. And I hope you two are back next year, leading the space. The young people love you. You're incredible. Um, keep doing what you're doing. Greg, you got it?
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Uh, that means that means a lot. Um, so, alright, yeah, excellent. Thank you, Bob. Um, so yeah, it's called the Advocacy Room and it's in a space for for uh student voices. Um, so you can go ahead to slide two.
Thank you. And this is just a little bit of snapshot of what the program is. So it is a virtual this year, um webinar and workshop series. It's targeted at middle and high school students. Um, and it is ideal for both students of college, but anyone also who wants to support their peers who may be facing discrimination within the school environment. The benefit is that students are left feeling empowered to advocate for themselves and others while helping to develop a positive school climate where all students can feel respect and love. Um, and Mr. Porch, thank you for that introduction of Darlene Reyes, who was um the student Equity Instructor for the Advocacy Room. And she did an incredible job um running all ten sessions um with students virtually. Um, and leading students through some targeted instruction in D E I and then also facilitating discussions on the topics topics at hand and guiding students and creating suggestions for future work. And we can go to the next slide. Thank you.
So um, yeah, I just want to echo what uh Jackie and and Ray already said, but Darlene was amazing and she did such a great job, especially uh allowing the students to speak their minds, but also um, you know, keeping them on topic and in bounds and that kind of stuff. And uh, so it was, it was really great to see. And it was, it was a learning experience for me too, as a teacher, ways that I can, I can improve in those spaces too. So um, as to who participated, we had a total of eighteen students. Um, they were from a wide variety of cultural linguistic backgrounds, uh, you know, race, gender, creed, all that. Um, and it just represented a really just a fragment of the diversity that's here in the community and in the school. Um, so, and there were students from every grade. Uh, there was a large overabundance probably of Latin students because I'm in my classroom and, you know, obviously, uh, I have the same students every year. So but apart from that, it was, it was a variety of students. Um, Patrick Larkin, uh, as you said, and and Ray Porch, uh, were also frequently there, um, whenever schedules permitted. Uh, and then um Jackie and I were the the coordinators. And so basically, our job was mostly just to sort of set the timing and and make sure the communication between Darlene and the students uh happened effectively. So so we kind of, for the most part, we just sort of brought people together and then sat back and learned ourselves. So alright, so next uh, next slide.
Alright, so what did these sessions look like? So there are three areas that um the Advocacy Room focused on in the session. So the first was terminology and this was learning core concepts that came through ten interactive ninety-minute sessions. Um, one aspect that I really enjoyed um of this was the breakout rooms. And um those were something that we were able to take part in in person, where we met in the high school, but with Darlene still there, virtually checking in on each group. Um, we worked through some real scenarios where students shared their real-life experiences and practiced problem-solving skills. And all of this was- And all of this was kind of created through the Student Advocacy Room Student Playbook. And that's that for that slide.
So yeah, and the, the playbook sort of led into the final discussions of what were concrete things that the students wanted to look at in our community, in our school, that need to be addressed, that they felt needed to be addressed. And so it was sort of along this guideline of questions, you know, what is the current context of the problem? Who, for the key people involved, right? Administrators, school committee, superintendent, you know, whoever, principal. You know, what is the current stance or policy on a specific thing? What did the students think the ideal solution would be? What does meeting in the middle look like? And then what are, what are you proposing? So that was sort of the, the order of business, especially for the last two meetings. Alright, next.
Alright, so towards the end of the 10 sessions, as Greg just mentioned, is when students were divided into three working groups. And the purpose of these working groups was to try and move from the learning, which involved a lot of direct instruction, conversation, student experience in breakout rooms and to try and utilize that to move into action. And where it led was students working through those templates together and with staff members involved as well. Those of us who were, who were part of it, myself, Mr. Larkin, Mr. Porch and Mr. Stringer. And students began to develop initial proposals of how to implement change here at BHS. The three topics that were the target areas for these groups were curriculum, school culture and community building, and then classroom culture and norms. And these remain a work in progress. So how we wanted to share what students came up with was to kind of take their words from these templates and share out their initial proposals, which revolved around target areas for change. And these came from school culture and community building and the classroom culture and norms groups. So here are the students' words. So first suggestion here was more consistent and coordinated rules and structures across the school, both in and out of the classroom. More even enforcement of the rules, more taking account of mental health issues. Next, initial proposal was more directed school-wide conversations about what school looks like at BHS. Discussions around what a reasonable amount of work to expect per classroom per day would look like. Outlining more clearly both staff and student responsibilities. And that was from, I believe, the Classroom Culture and Norms section. And then this was from Community Building, that all students need to learn about culture. Regular feedback from all students with action plans and accountability for fostering safe learning environments for all students. And again, this is a bit of a work in progress, we'll kind of get to next steps in one of our next slides. And that wraps up this slide.
Okay, the next one.
No more slides. Ah, no, there it is, there it is, okay.
Thank you, everyone.
So yeah, so next steps. So both we, the, the coordinators, the students, I believe Mr. Larkin, Mr. Porch as well, all are in favor of the idea of a part two, of a continuation of this program. Especially, you know, when we got to the action plan at the end, we sort of ran out of time, I guess, in order to sort of thoroughly flesh out those ideas and the coordination of how to potentially implement some of student suggestions, you know, what the steps to take, et cetera. Also, the students felt, and we agree as well, that it'd be great to spread this to a larger number of students. You know, 18 is obviously a very small percentage of the total students. And it would be important to help normalize sort of these kind of conversations throughout the school and throughout classrooms, throughout the day. Also, one consideration was the scheduling, so it happened during class times. So originally the agreement was the students were supposed to attend all 10 sessions. But sometimes that became difficult if, you know, my big chemistry lab is on this day, or I have a big exam on this day, or the P test is a day, whatever, et cetera. So perhaps some, some thinking about scheduling in a way that doesn't force students to miss class in order to participate or vice versa, you know, that they don't have to miss the advocacy room in order to, to do something important for school. So we're gonna have an upcoming meeting this coming Tuesday, next Tuesday with Mr. Larkin, Mr. Porch, Principal Sullivan, about talking about how best to go forward with the advocacy room and how to make it, you know, integrated with the rest of, of the DEI initiatives taking place at the high school and in the BHS, in the, in the, sorry, in the BPS system overall. So next.
Okay, so now we're gonna move into student perspectives on their experience. And we have two students who were unable to be here, but did submit written reflections that they requested we share. And we, I believe, have two students here virtually. And I just want to take this opportunity briefly to say how grateful I am to have been a part of this and to get to, have had the opportunity to listen and learn with some incredible young people. So I'm going to read the reflection of Aiden Khalifa. And I'm gonna pull up a, a larger version, it's a little bit small on my screen, so thank you for waiting as I find something. Okay, here we go. So this is what Aiden Khalifa wanted to share this evening. "The Advocacy Room has been a space where I've learned to recognize and respond to biases, discrimination and inclusiveness. It has really taught me a lot about my own personal bias and how I can advocate and stand up for others. The Advocacy Room also asserts this, that no matter how large or small you try to make the world a better place, whether that be making a new student more comfortable or standing up against misconduct, you are making positive and effective change for our community. This has been really profound for my peers since it is empowering us to be the builders of our future. I find the Advocacy Room incredibly powerful and beneficial. However, the Advocacy Room is filled with brilliant students who want to be there and who want to talk about the heavy issues. These issues do not stay in the room where we meet, these issues plague our town and our schools. These issues of racism, sexism, homophobia are not solely discussed in the Advocacy Room, they are practiced in the halls of my school. Being honest, Burlington has a bad reputation for racism, homophobia and sexism. Is that what we are? Possibly, but who do we want to become? Is that who we want our children to become? Hopefully, you answer no, and this starts with beginning to understand and empathize with others. The Advocacy Room helped me with this and I believe it can help others as well. We need to ask ourselves, how do we want our students, our children, to react to the issues of today? We need our students to advocate for others, since these issues will not vanish overnight. We need to teach our students to show empathy for others. We need the Advocacy Room or the teachings of the Advocacy Room to expand. It has empowered me to stand up for others and for the moral right choice, and I believe it can help others as well. So we thank Aiden for sharing that with us."
And I'm gonna just echo what Jackie said too, and how thankful I have been to, been given this opportunity to participate and hear from students and see them in a very different setting than, you know, Latin class. So this is from actually one of my Latin students, Tessie Schultz, she's a sophomore. She says, "I really enjoyed coming to the Advocacy Room meetings because the experience and people there were always positive. It was a great space to learn something new without fear of being judged for your lack of knowledge on the subject. Especially as someone who is white, it is important to have these uncomfortable conversations. I know that even just a conversation to try and understand someone else who might think differently than you can make a world of difference to them and to yourself and how you might think about things." That's Tessie Schultz. And now we have two students in the audience, or virtually, they wanted to be able to add their perspective, so. I don't know, Nate, you wanna go first?
Yeah, sure. So I think the Advocacy Room was a really great thing for a lot of students. It taught me and a lot of others so many great things about like being, most importantly, I think, being empathetic and like trying to look at things from another perspective or trying to understand things. And you know, especially thinking about what we say and how, how that impacts people. Which is why, you know, I really think the Advocacy Room would benefit from, or something similar would be, be beneficial to be spread to a larger crowd because I know a lot of the people who signed up for the Advocacy Room would 100% agree with all the points. But you know, there are a lot of students in the school who definitely do have some problematic issues and that's partly because they've never been addressed. So I think the Advocacy Room is really important to be spread around because, you know, these, us 18 students are already making like a difference by standing up to others in the school, but I think it'd make a world of difference if they could understand why, what, what they're saying is hurtful to us and other people. So yeah, I think the Advocacy Room was great and I think it should be spread.
Thank you, Nate.
And I believe Vivon may be here with us as well, so Vivon, if you are here, please feel free to chime in.
I am here.
Great, thank you.
Alright, so my name is Vivon Ponday. Earlier this year, I heard from Mrs. Crossman, who I think was speaking earlier about the tenacity challenge, she's my English teacher, that me just was piloting a new program around DEI called the Advocacy Room. And I was interested, so I decided to sign up for it. And I gotta say, it was a great decision. Over the course of the 10 meetings that we had, I acquired a rather solid understanding of social justice in America based on like contemporary and past struggles of minority groups to retain it. And I had no knowledge of this prior and like, similar to what Tessie had written in her statement, that like she was afraid that showing up without much knowledge would have made it difficult to participate, but I didn't find it that way, just like she did. Sorry.
No worries.
So anyway, like, as I said, that a lot of our discussions revolved around contemporary and past struggles of minority groups in America and how people can feel very distant because they're not affected by them. Like for example, I don't find myself to be directly affected by these issues, but these discussions helped me learn a lot. They were very interesting and very enjoyable. One great thing was that our community was very tightly knit and simultaneously very open to a diverse range of voices and perspectives. This was possible thanks to the many staff that were involved in it, like Ms. Reyes, who not only did a good job with her thorough planning of discussions, but was very friendly and just made the experience more cordial. And then you have Mr. Stringer and Ms. Rogers, whose frequent contributions to the discussion created a very positive environment. And then the presence of Mr. Larkin and Mr. Porch just confirmed to me from the very beginning that like the Advocacy Room was this jumping off point for the difficult conversations that needed to be added in order to enact field change. The one criticism I had to offer was this, that while the discussions were definitely worth having, I felt that the time spent in thoroughly examining every social issue or construct could have been better used in talking about the application of what we learned to Brumpton High School. I just, in other words, my only regret is that too little time was given to what should have been the main focus of the program, which is using the knowledge we had learned and applying it by brainstorming ideas to promote DEI and acting on those lines. We had one meeting where we did this, but I feel like if we'd done, devoted two or three meetings to doing this, it would have been that much better. Now, of course, we're obviously on a time constraint and Mr. Stringer mentioned earlier that he would like to see it get lengthened. So I feel that like if it was, if the program was tailored to focus around not only learning about social justice, but also enacting things in relation to that, tangible changes could be made and Brumpton High School would become that much of a better place.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Again, I'm having trouble seeing everyone on the screen, so I just wanted to be sure I.
I think everybody will.
Go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Porch, go ahead.
So again, a big thank you to our, our incredible educator facilitators. Needless to say, some of these conversations where you hear the adults talking about the learning is, is super important. And I'm so proud of, of these educators as well as these young people. And I, and I want to safely speak for Mr. Larkin as well. I agree with, with the students' assessment of what we could do better. I know that we're gonna sit together and talk through how to roll out a, a even stronger iteration of this. But I want to be clear that the learning piece is essential. Our young people learn at a very, very high and, and quick clip. And so we, we, you know, we've got to kind of acquiesce to that as, as the adults, if we really want to hold on to our young people because what they've said so eloquently and respectfully is that the, the learning is one aspect of it, but the doing is, is, is something else. And I, and I said this to Dr. Conti and I'll, I'll let him speak to it. What I would say to this committee is this, you came up with a, with a equity statement. And you know, I, I, I would hope that we get more versed in like reading that every school committee, because I think that that's important, if, if the statement is something that we're serious about, we should read it. But our young people are, are gonna ask questions about all these things. And we talk a lot about elevating student voice. Well, two consecutive meetings, you've heard a lot from the students. And you know, if, if we want our young people to continue to believe in us and trust us, we have to act accordingly. That's what I learned from this year, working with our young people in Burlington, from all sides, special education, black students, Latino students, Asian students, you know, you know, the gamut. They're, they're in one space in terms of their thinking about what we need to do to be better. They have wonderful ideas about how we can do that. So I would just encourage us to kind of learn a little bit from them as we go forward. So, so with that, I just, I think that that's important to elevate on behalf of, of those young people and our educators who are courageously stepping into this space to do good work for the future of our young people in the society they want to be a part of. Alright, Dr. Conti?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Porch, I apologize if I stepped on you, I just couldn't see you, so I apologize for that. Again, Ms. Rogers, Mr. Stringer, again, I just want to express gratitude. I know it took a lot of extra time. Mr. Porch, Mr. Larkin, again, as always, your work with students has been really positive. Aiden, Jesse, Nate and Vivon, again, thank you for sharing your words with us. I think to the committee, what is, has been sort of interesting to me is the, the student priorities that came on the Advocacy Room matched many of the priorities that are occurring and that we're discussing as adults. And again, that's not being coordinated. So I do think listening to that student voice, getting that feedback is something that is well aligned with what we are doing. I think part of the reason for bringing the student voice here to the committee is that trying to demonstrate the oper, you know, the operationalizing of the words that we often discuss in your policies and, and, and the budget. Again, Mr. Porch mentioned the equity statement, I can, I will read the equity statement now. But the word that I try to focus on and I know that everyone else does as well in the district is the word thrive. And hopefully, you've seen evidence of students thriving and all students thriving and some of the student voice that you heard, you heard this evening. So with that, I forgot my glasses were on my head. Again, the equity statement from the committee that again, I hope you saw brought to life at least this evening a, a little bit and that we have to continue to bring to life is educational equity means that every child belongs and receives whatever support he, she, they need to develop his, her, their full academic, emotional and social potential to learn and thrive every day. This begins with kindness and valuing the humanity of every child individual. And again, I think you'll see some common themes that the students expressed. I think Mr. Jaclyn is going to present the Youth Risk Behavior Survey sort of view from 10,000 feet of the middle school and high school. I think you'll see some common themes there. I think you'll see some common themes in the efforts that you'll see in the district improvement plan moving forward, like historic practices and, and other types of things that we're looking, looking at doing. So that it's gonna be a constant theme for the committee and I think, I hope that you'll see the, again, the activation of the words that, that you were, you have charged us with. So again, Mr. String, Mr. Stringer, Ms. Rogers, I just want to make sure that we, we end with thanking you. It's the work with students that's, the, the work of schools is done in your classrooms and it just was outstanding to listen to the students today. And again, it's impressive how aligned their voices with, are with, with the adult conversations that we're having. So we need to bring them to the table, so thank you.
Thank you all so much.
And I, I wanted to say thank you as well. And I want to comment, I did want to make one comment. To me, again, I think you need to really find a way to allow the students to participate without being pulled from other classes. That's always bothered me, so find a way to, to do that if you can. Thank you. Um, so find a way to to do that if you can, thank you. Um, so is there anything else you wanna take out of our Dr. Conti?
Excuse me?
Or shall we remove to um?
Excuse me, excuse me, Ms. Bond? I just had one, uh, it's sort of a request, but it's sort of more of a a comment, I just. There was a lot of information we couldn't quite read um in your presentation and if it's possible or at the point where it's appropriate. I would love to have some of the written materials that your, the students in this group have produced. Um, so that I can have a little more time to think about what they're saying and what they're observing and what they're asking for. Um, so if that's possible, I would like and maybe the whole committee would like to have that.
Sure, we make that available, again, Mr. Stringer, um, Ms. Rogers, with permission, we could share your PowerPoint if that's if that's okay.
Yeah.
It's a public at this point, so we can certainly make sure that you get a written copy.
Let me just shine in one more time here, Dr. Conti, um. The other thing uh that we're gonna have a conversation about, and and this will include Mr. Sullivan. This idea of this work um becoming embedded in in our culture, that is the Burlington School District. Um, one of the things that's been elevated by Mr. Larkin and 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 a couple of other folks is the potential of this become a credit bearing class. Um, I don't know what that looks like in terms of the logistics, uh but the question is a good one. I know the value that it'll have, I think it meets some of the the ask that these young people are speaking to, some of their experiences and making it relevant. But most importantly, make it an essential part of the learning that becomes necessary in this community as we evolve as a community. Um, so that's something we'll talk through, obviously, that that would be a a a big step forward, it would lead, you know, some collaboration and from from. In invoices from other stakeholders, but I just wanna lay that out there, that this is something that has been elevated as well. Just just so you, you know, kind of are aware, alright?
Um, thank you very much, um, I just wanna make sure there are no other student speaking this evening, you all have exams. So I just wanna make sure the highs, there are high school students, Bob, is there any, I don't think there's any other uh student feedback we're getting tonight? Okay.
Doesn't look like it.
Alright, so with that, um, Madam Chair.
What are we doing next?
Dancing.
Uh, well, we can go back, um, under learning, we can go to the Burlington High School Student Handbook, uh second reading. And while we're doing that, Mr. Jackling, I can invite you up to the chair and we can get your um. We can get your um. Presentation ready. So.
Mr. Sullivan, I'm gonna.
Nope, um, I'm gonna do, I'm sorry, I'm trying to juggle too many things right now.
Can't see him, but it's hard to see the names.
Yeah, uh, at the May twenty fourth um meeting, Principal Sullivan presented the Burlington High School Student Handbook for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year as a first reading. Handbook is being presented as a second reading and the committee should again vote it, it's recommended. School committee vote to adopt the Burlington High School Student Handbook for next year, the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. Um, I just will remind the committee that it's a, it's a living document, so if um. If we need to change it, we can change it in real time and then it would just be a matter of communicating those changes to families as we move forward, so. Um, but it is important, it is important that the schools have a handbook in place to start the school year.
Sorry, interjection, so moved, and I do have a comment.
Second.
Second.
Okay, and discussion, go ahead, um, I I just wanna thank uh Mr. Sullivan and all the people who worked on updating the handbook. It is easy to leave them be and they get very outdated at times. And the changes that were made this year, I think are really important and appropriate, so I wanna thank them. Uh, the two we particularly discussed was adding to the sports area about that we. We compete for com- for character and not just for winning. Um, and the other was to update um our discipline policy uh to uh equalize or. Make more equitable the alcohol and other uh marijuana or other drug kinds of uh offenses. Um, it within the limits of Mass- Massachusetts state law. So thank you to all the people who've updated and I support this handbook as it stands right now.
Okay, thank you, and uh so we'll go ahead and take a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, am and aye, all opposed? Alright, so it's four zero zero. And are you ready?
I am.
Excellent.
So thank you, Madam Chair, uh Matt Jackling is our Director of Physical Education and Health for um our entire district, so he covers a lot of ground. So Matt, first of all, thank you for your work. Um, Matt has also been a sort of a leader and a member of the group that has introduced um the um, the high school um.
Advisory?
Advisory, sorry, I blanked in on the high school advisory, um, so Matt, again, thank you and please thank all the others who who have done that. Uh, to the committee or to the community, the YRBS stands for the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, it's a biannual survey that we run middle school and high school. Um, it just asks, it's an anonymous survey, so we don't get specific information, it asks sort of generalities about um. Issues the students are having in terms of their um risk-taking behaviors. Um, it does help us drive staffing, have other conversations, talk about programming areas of focus, so we we do use the results. I think this is our third time that we've collaborated with the other Middle Sex League communities, so eleven of the twelve. Uh, participate in the same survey at the same time, um, we wanna thank um the Leahy Group, Leahy Clinic, Leahy Hospital for funding. Um, the YRBS, they've done it for the last six years, so three, three times that they've done that. And so um, and again, it's a, it's a very large undertaking, but the um student results we get are for Burlington and then we get a Middle Sex League group. Uh, as well, and it just gives us a better comparison, so again, and Leahy has been instrumental in focusing on that community health need. So with that, Mr. Jackling, um, thank you and uh I appreciate you being here this evening.
Alright, my pleasure, um, first of all, just wanna say thank you to the school committee, um, this program that we've been utilizing the past couple of years. Uh, the wire, being able to implement the YRBS consistently is really important. Um, in order for us to kind of get that data changed so that we can look through over time and and see how our student behaviors are changing or improving, getting worse. Um, this specific time uh was really uh interesting because, you know, we did this in April of twenty twenty-one. Um, when we were just coming back to being full-time in school, uh, students were coming from various, you know, different experiences based on whatever was happening in their own homes during the pandemic. Um, and a lot of that, I think, shows up here. With this, with the data that we draw from this, you know, as Dr. Conti said, this, this gives us a direction at times. Um, we know that it's not concrete, but it gives us insight into what student behaviors are and this is really. The most direct access point we have to this information, uh, it comes directly from our students. Gets interpreted, we look at that data at the middle school and the high school level, we draw some conclusions as to where we are. Um, and it really allows us just to have a better pulse on what what risk behaviors can start participating in. So we're really lucky to be able to continue to keep this up, we've been doing the YRBS for longer than this time, but. There since JSI sponsored and Leahy sponsored this program, we've had three implementations of it and just to be able to have that collective Middle Sex League data is really helpful. Just to compare ourselves to other communities around, recognizing trends that may happen just in Burlington versus other areas. And it gives us kind of some insight as to areas where we need to grow or areas where we feel like we're really taking on some of these issues head on. Um, so, we're gonna get into the presentation, I'll do my best to be concise, uh, this is the first time that we've had middle school and high school data kind of lumped into one report. Uh, so that's been very helpful, but at the same time, it just, uh, so I'll be bouncing back from middle school to high school on some of these issues. As we go through, if you wanna interrupt and ask questions about the content, feel free, I know at the end, it's it's kind of like an avalanche of information, it's really hard to work backwards, so feel free to uh to jump in as we go. Here we go, uh, so as Dr. Conti said, we've been doing this since two thousand seven, two thousand and nineteen, we did it as well. Uh, eleven of the twelve Middle Sex League schools do it, Lexington does not participate, they have their own survey that they've been using for a much longer time period, excuse me, time period. And they did not wanna kind of corrupt that data by jumping into this. So we had six hundred forty-six middle school students and six hundred ninety-five high school students participate in this. It's easy to think of it as percentage points, but when we start to look at like essentially one percent is seven students. So one percent may seem insignificant, but you know, you look in a classroom and all of a sudden, seven students looks a lot different than that number. Uh, so as we move forward, just one thing to keep in mind is that when you're looking at some of this data, moving that into a. Looking at that data as a, as a number of kids instead of a percentage point, that's kind of change how we view it. Alright, uh, different risk behavior categories that are examined, uh, it's the same s- six categories that we traditionally look at, this year they added one more, which I'll get to momentarily. Uh, behaviors that contribute to unintentional injuries, behaviors related to mental health, behaviors that are smoking, tobacco use, alcohol and other drug use. Uh, sexual behaviors and then unhealthy dietary behaviors and physical inactivity. So this year, because we're coming back from the pandemic during this implementation, they asked a few specific questions about. How students were sort of getting through during that time, that challenging time that every student had. Um, and and just reflecting on some of this data, I haven't seen this really pop up anywhere else and so it's been really insightful for. Getting a better grasp of what our students have gone through during this. So in regards to the impact of the pandemic on student mental health, thirty-three percent of our students. Uh, of our high school students and about twenty-six percent of middle school students reported that their mental health was not good most of the time or always. Um, in addition to that, and this one is really what caught me off guard, nineteen percent of our high school and twenty-three percent of our middle school students reported that they experienced the death of a family member of our close friend. Uh, doing the math on that, it works out to be around two hundred and eighty students experienced some kind of loss uh during that time, now siblings, families, things like that. When we think about. How we got through that time as adults, you know, and what really impacted us during that. And I'd like to pick up my stuff together some days, um, but when we think about a high school kid or a middle school student. When the world is kind of unraveling in front of you and now these are happening, you know, there's a lot of long-lasting implications to that. Um, and when we think about kind of how our students are coming back now, you know, we're a year out from when this survey was implemented. I think people are under the impression that we're back to normal and normal pre-COVID doesn't exist anymore for a lot of families. And we have to kind of keep that in mind moving forward. Next slide. Uh, one of the things that mentioned here uh that I think is actually encouraging, we had varied responses on percent of high school students who reported that they agreed. Or strongly agree that they felt close to people in their school during this time. I think there was obviously a lot of of barriers to connection during this, as we all experienced, but I think there was sincere effort made for teachers to. Connect with students in ways that they traditionally haven't and when we look at kind of the lessons that we learned over the past couple of years, that's something that's lasted. Faculty members in both the middle school and high school have really recognized how important it is to create connection outside of academic. Academic demands and this shows that we had some some genuine effort during this time and that and that's really encouraging because again, based on everyone's individual experience during the pandemic. Some people just didn't have, whether it was the emotional resources to to kind of spread yourself out that way. Um, so we really made an effort from our teaching staff, uh, so looking at these numbers, it does break it up by ethnicity and I think that's telling, also male, female. Um, and it compares us to the Middle Sex League region as a whole, uh, next slide. And then we're looking at our middle school numbers as well, um, so it's, it's hard to take too much from this, from these two slides, I think it just gives us a snapshot of what kids were feeling during this time. Um, how they felt connected to their, to their clu- to their school, to their classes while this was going on. Alright, the next content area is unintentional injuries and violence, uh, which are defined as accidental injuries where the harmful outcome was not sought, occurred in a short period of time or normal body functions were blocked by external means, so. This is motor ve- motor vehicle issues, uh, falls, fires, drowning, like bullying, things like that that were coming up. Um, so next slide. One percent of our high school students reported that they drove a car or other vehicles when they, under the influence of alcohol, three percent reported that they drove a car or other. Vehicle under the influence of marijuana in the past thirty days. When we look at a lot of these numbers, we have a lot of resources where we've now put all this data into one like cumulative table, the majority of our numbers are down. That doesn't mean we've solved things, it just means, you know, during this time period, students didn't have the traditional social access that they've had in the past. And I think we're gonna see that in a lot of these numbers. Next one, twenty percent of Burlington High School students reported that they checked their cell phone, texted or emailed while driving a car or other vehicle in the past thirty days. Uh, again, those numbers were pretty consistent. Looking at this through like the scale of race, some of the things that came up were interesting, especially when it came to being bullied. Uh, students who reported being electronically bullied over the past twelve months, uh, you'll notice a lot of disparities that we have. Uh, the high school and at the middle school, they're kind of were living in different worlds, if you think about grade six, seven, eight versus nine through twelve, there's. A lot of differences in terms of how students are getting through those time periods, uh, but most importantly here, if you notice that there's a big disparity. Um, that the biggest numbers we see are that our multi-race students at the high school, excuse me, at the middle school. Uh, and our gender queer students at the middle school are feeling like they've been electronically bullied the most. Uh, just one side note here, uh, gender queer, if you notice here, says not reported for the high school. Uh, there wasn't a significant amount of students who reported as being gender queer during the demographic questions. So it didn't really make sense to look at that information on the question by quote, to make that a subset for the high school, for the middle school it did, based on the number of kids who reported that. Uh, additionally, um, eleven percent and eleven point three percent of our MSMS students responded with a yes, that someone posted something about them on social media that made them upset or uncomfortable. Uh, this is where kind of this information is is hard to really decipher, you know, this makes them uncomfortable, it could be for various reasons, right, it could be about themselves. Um, it could be something about the world as a whole, kind of where we stand politically or all these things that are kind of in the mix of social media right now. Um, but I do think one thing we noticed is that during this time, when students were traditionally home during the pandemic, students were accessing social media at a much higher rate than normal. I understand why, I think a lot of our students were looking for outlets, were looking for ways to uh kind of survive that time. As some of you may know, if you were home with your families, it was a challenge, um, but also just being, be- being a little bit more involved in that world. Next slide. Uh, mental health, which is probably the area that we tend to feel the most concerned about, uh, just because of the possible outcomes during this. So in the uh, in the United States, approximately one in four youth meet criteria for a lifetime mental disorder such as depression, anxiety or ADHD. Uh, and this shows up a lot in our students and the way that they learn, they behave or they handle their emotions. Next slide. Overall, twenty-eight percent of Burlington High School and eighteen percent of middle school students reported that their mental health was not good, most of the time or always. Um, this is pretty consistent with the Middle Sex League as a whole. If you look, it 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 kind of makes sense how this goes, right, we're working up as grades go up, as grade levels change. Um, mental health struggles in Burlington increased from being down from eighteen, I should be thirteen percent up to thirty-two percent once we got to that other end. Um, so looking at the grade levels, you can start to make some ideas about why those changes are happening. Um, but I do think when we look at how workload changes, different social stressors start to become more prominent. Uh, I think that makes sense with kind of where we see our students. Next slide. Some, there were some disparities noted specifically in regards to gender and race, again, like uh multi-race students. Female students had very high areas of um poor mental health during this time. And it's just something that we wanna kind of keep note of and think about when we're having these conversations like what we just talked about with the advocacy room. Looking at some of this data through that lens and utilizing it as maybe a way as a jumping off point for some of those conversations that need to happen. Next slide. Overall, the biggest source of stress was asked, uh, and source of stress for students is keeping up with schoolwork, you know, listening to your forty-five percent, thirty-two percent at the middle school. Uh, but if you look around, a lot of that comes down to just, there's so many, if you ask a student what they're stressed about, classwork is probably gonna be the most prominent answer just because. It it takes a lot of time, a lot of energy, but also it's probably the thing that they may be disagreeing with the most. So I understand that, but uh there are a lot of other factors that play in uh into our student stress levels, but I do think just. It needs to be a continual conversation with, you know, if you, in the advocacy room, they mentioned about how student expectations for classwork. Teacher expectations for classwork and how that impacts student performance, I think that's an ongoing conversation that needs to be continually examined. Uh, next up, the prevalence of uh symptoms of depression. Okay, so during this, it did go through, we looked through the principle of race again and talked about how different students were feeling um. The symptoms of depression, they tend to just frame it as high school students feeling so sad or hopeless almost every day for two weeks or more that they stopped doing usual activities. That's like that clinical definition of how we view depression, it's a lot better that we ask it this way instead of ask about whether or not you're feeling depressed. Because that just provides a lot of vagueness, you know, this is kind of a bit more specific. Um, multiracial students reported higher levels of depression than other races, which again is a common trend. Um, and relative female students are two times more likely to suffer from depression than male students. Alright, game two, self harm, um, so this tends to be where a lot of our numbers are are jarring. Um, but I think talking to a lot of the people who. But I think talking to a lot of the people who worked on this, on this project with me, a lot of those are people who are working in our mental health resources within the middle school and the high school. Not that they're enthusiastic about these numbers, but these come from students who most of them are already in touch with and already helping to work through and giving them appropriate support levels within the classroom and outside of, outside of school. So self-harm has really kind of been consistent throughout. The thing that's always interesting to me is those numbers tend to rise during middle school. If you look at that chart, you know, in the sixth, seventh and eighth grade, they're traditionally, those are high. And as it gets, as students get past that age, you know, it does kind of slowly kind of moderate out a little bit. Go ahead. All right, next numbers are about making a plan or attempted suicide. So now we're getting to like, like that suicide ideology, excuse me, looking at suicide and thinking about making a plan, suicidal ideation. And again, those numbers are continuing to rise in middle school early on and then get a little more stable as we get into high school. Additionally with that, there's not a whole lot of fluctuation when we look at that through spectrum of race. The one thing I will say, gender queer students do have a higher risk and our students are reporting that as well. This next question is something that we've been looking at a lot and it's kind of stemmed into a lot of our advocacy talks. And if you look specifically at that third block of numbers from the left, this has to do with, do our students feel like they have someone in the building that they can talk to when they need support? And those numbers, they've steadily declined. Now, there's a lot of reasons for that. And I don't think the answer is student, you know, students and teachers are actively trying to be less connected. I think when you look at the spectrum of how students work their way through the school day now, and we look at how students are constantly be, working through their day when it comes to the demands of extra work, when it comes through the demands of extracurriculars, sometimes they're passing through, you know, when they're just trying to get to the next class, they're just trying to get to the next activity they have. Our job is to try and make them not feel like that. Unfortunately, there's just so many go-go-gos that our students face. And part of that is on them for overbringing themselves, but the other part of it is about how we can slow down the day a little bit for students. And I do feel, being in the high school, having, having advisory in there, having flex block taking place in our new schedule that's going on this year, has allowed for a little bit more downtime. And I know students appreciate it. I think it's a work in progress still, but just having time baked into the day that allows students to get some, a good thirty minute chunk where it's all right, reset for my day, figure out what class is coming up next, whatever demands do I have to take that time has really been impactful on students. Looking at these numbers, so again, looking at that third chart, Burlington High School is the blue bar, the fifty-four percent. Again, that number has kind of steadily gone down over time. In two thousand nineteen, we're at fifty-five percent of that number, and seventeen, we're at sixty-three percent. And at two thousand sixteen, we were at seventy percent. And again, like I don't think people are doing a worse job. I think there's just societal trends that are disconnecting us. Similarly with the middle school, we don't have as long as the data trail. But in two thousand nineteen, the last time we did that, we were at fifty-two point three percent. So it's down about one and a half percent during that time. Interesting enough, we are pretty consistent with the Middle Sex League and middle schools and in high schools with all this data. All right, substance abuse. Studies show that the earlier substance abuse begins, the more likely continued use of substance and development of substance use problems are to occur now. During this time, and again, this is probably one of those asterisks that we have, students were not out of the house nearly as much. And so access to social gatherings, access to some of these resources that are necessary for students to participate in this abuse would decrease. And we saw that pretty consistently. So next slide. Looking at what our students do, percentage of Burlington students reporting past thirty day, excuse me, reporting use in the past thirty days, our numbers have dropped based on what we've done in the past. Just a couple of things to pull from here. Alcohol is down to seventeen percent. The year, the previous survey was up around twenty-one percent. So that dropped significantly. Marijuana is at seven percent here, it was twenty-one percent in our previous YRBS. And then vaping was twenty-four point three percent in the last, at the peak of what vaping was when it was the thing that was happening, and that's clearly dropped. So again, part of that is access, part of that is social functions as terms of how students were able to leave the house or whether or not they were or not, and some of the restrictions that were kind of a byproduct of the pandemic. But these numbers have steadily declined. Also looked at it over grade, which I think is the first time they kind of offered this data, like over grade, where it talks about the specific different type of abuse that's going on. And these numbers made sense based on what we're seeing. It also brings a little bit into the conversation about like how marijuana has become more prevalent over time based on, you know, legal status of it. But we're also looking at consistently, not that we want consistent growth, but I think if our, if our bars were a lot higher to the left, we would be a little bit more concerned. So this, when we're talking about it with our health educators and with some of our administrators, these numbers align with what we're seeing. All right, this next one is interesting to me. This is about perceived risk. And in my mind, this might be one of the most important slides that we get into. How they view the behavior. And, you know, there's a lot of studies that talk about, you know, abuse reduction techniques and limiting access. And in the end, you know, we have, kids when they get to a certain age are going to start taking risky behaviors and starting to contemplate whether or not they're for them or not. The one thing that really stood out to this is if you look at that first slot, excuse me, that first bar, smoking marijuana once or twice a week, we have fourteen percent of our student body at the high school that viewed that as no risk at all. All right, and that, that was alarming for us, obviously. Looking at what that, what that can lead to, you know, talking about the impact that it has on young developing brains, all those things are really important for that part of the conversation. But I think a lot of it just comes down to perception, you know, and students are always, as much as we'd love to think that they're taking what we say, you know, as gospel sometimes, you know, there's, the, their peer pressure that exists, the social world that they live in doesn't view marijuana currently as being as negative as what's been portrayed in the past. Also, if we look at alcohol, the risk like that perceived risk definitely kind of grows as the behaviors get a little bit more extreme. Taking comfort in the fact that the use of vaping devices has grown, people now view that as being a great risk and a moderate risk, which before was just not what the culture was saying. And now cigarettes, as you can tell, like it's just flipped, which has been lovely, especially for what we're trying to do. All right, next up is sexual behaviors. Again, these numbers were impacted dramatically by being out and not being able to leave the house. You know, opportunity is part of what the pandemic really limited when it came to all a lot of these behaviors, whether it's just kids being out and, you know, like we talked about drinking and driving, we talked about being away from parents, we talked about online access. So a lot of this is reflective of that. Youth who engage in sexual behaviors are at risk for unintended health outcomes such as HIV, STDs and unintended pregnancy. And when we're looking at this data, you know, one of the things that we really want to focus on is just kind of again, like progression, right? Like how does this change over age? How does this change over grade? Is it following the curve that it should? So thirty-six percent of Burlington High School twelfth graders reported that they had had sexual intercourse compared to twenty-five percent of eleventh graders and ten percent of tenth graders. So again, those numbers are growing and they're consistent with Middle Sex League average, which is important to see. Next slide. This is reported, ever had sexual intercourse by gender and by race. Again, different groups, you know, looking, this is looking at the high school versus the middle school. One statistic here that is inaccurate, if you look at females, it says nineteen percent for high school and nineteen percent for middle school. I made sure immediately that that was incorrect. That number's two point three percent. So just to, that was an edit in their data. So unsound the alarms. And then lastly, with sexual behaviors, most of it comes down to education. You know, how are we teaching our students about, you know, how to practice safe sex, how to make sure that they're using prevention methods to keep themselves healthy, to keep partners healthy? Similar to the Middle Sex League, condoms are most common method used to prevent pregnancy by Burlington High School students. And it just took us down kind of the different methods of the show. Probably the most encouraging is only two percent used, said that they use no method of contraception, which is important. The last section here has to do with dietary behaviors and physical activity. Nutrition and physical activity are important for optimal growth and development and chronic disease prevention. So we looked a little bit at eating choices. This also has to do with activity levels, it has to do with sleep. And so this kind of tells us what's going on outside of us. So how do students describe their own weight? It's very rare that it's so consistent with this data. Yeah, sorry, next slide, my fault. Looking at students, you know, fifty-five, fifty-four percent, both at the high school and the middle school believe that they're above, that they're about the right weight, which is encouraging. You know, for a long time, students and their perceptions of their bodies was, in my mind, one of the biggest issues we had. And again, that hasn't been solved, but we are definitely working towards modernizing our thinking about that, which is really important. You know, how students feel about themselves physically, it's, it seems very surface level, but it has such an impact on how they're doing on a day-to-day basis, how they get up out of bed every day. And so we are really happy that some of this is leveling off in different ways. Secondly, I think as a society, we're becoming a little bit more aware of body positivity and having students feel better kind of about where they're at, recognizing that that's not the most important part of their presentation of themselves. And that's, it's very encouraging to see. Dietary behaviors, this, so physical activity for sixty minutes on all seven days. So a lot of this comes from, this is looking at Burlington as a whole and seeing how active our students are consistently. And we do have large chunks of students who are active across the week, which is great to see. Obviously, we'd like all these numbers to be higher, but it's, the thing about, one, that students are getting activity within the school, but also they're taking the opportunity outside of school to stay active is really encouraging. And then this looks at the percentage of Burlington students who reported no physical activity in the past seven days. And the main outlier here is for our black students. If you look, there's a big percentage drop for students in, of this group that are not getting activity within the past week. So looking at this and starting to kind of break down what we can do to better access these students and provide a little bit more activity options, is going to be something that we look at for the future. Next up is diet, under dietary behaviors, is reporting having five or more hours of screen time a day by grade. Please note that that five or more hours is outside of schoolwork. All right, so this notes on top of schoolwork. So, yeah. So unfortunately, these numbers get very high as we move, especially to the older grades. So this is a large percentage of their day being on a screen. And part of that is, again, thinking pandemic, you know, was everyone sharing the remote? Probably not. So how students were being able to kind of get their own isolation during that time, but also what were they doing during that time? So I think that definitely impacted it. And part of what we need to do a better job of as, you know, as a health education, is looking at students and recognizing like that was what we all experienced, but we have to kind of work our way back off of it now. Because the reliance on that is becoming extremely problematic for our students in the building. We have students who really cannot survive without their device now, even for non-, you know, when we're asking them just to get breaks and downtime, whether it's small increments, it's becoming extremely problematic for students.
It's a silly question, but it includes gaming and all of that, correct?
All of that, yeah.
Yeah, because some of that is physical activity, right?
It is, it is.
And so, I mean, there's a way to break some of that out too, because all the screen time isn't all just sitting there.
I agree, I agree. And some of it's very productive, some of it's constructive, some of it is exploring passions, which, but we, I think we all, you know, looking at these numbers and then thinking about forty-four percent of our twelfth graders are on the screen, like that much outside of their classroom demands, that's, that's a lot. And talking to, I was very lucky this year, I had a group of seniors who were on internship with me, and we talked about a lot of these results, just to get more insight, right? Because forty-four percent tells me one thing, but talking to a couple of kids really provides me with a little bit better of where they're going with this. And they had a lot of those same, they had a lot of those experiences where during pandemic, just the pattern setting that that created for time after that. Now they're back in school and, you know, they're just used to spending a couple of hours watching a show or decompressing that way. And again, there's benefits, don't get me wrong, but that just became a routine over time. And now we have to kind of break those patterns. And as we know, that's one of the most challenging parts.
Well, some of them are reading books for pleasure though, on the, online as well versus paperback, so.
Right, there's definitely positive.
That's essentially a way to break it out maybe, you know?
Next slide, thanks. So the other part was that it's breaking it down by race. And again, if you look at some of our students, females were very high in this, black students and then gender queer students also reported that being a very high percentage. A few more. Additionally, for dietary behaviors and physical activity, looking at sleep, sixty-seven point nine percent of our BHS students and fifty-two point three percent of our MSMS students reported not getting eight or more hours of sleep on an average school night. So we do have a large percentage of students who are not doing this. And again, if we're talking about that time period where we took this, there, yeah, everyone's home life was a little off-centered compared to where we normally would prefer, but looking at this now and again, having some kind of more anecdotal discussions with students, this is, these patterns have lasted as well. So a couple of things that, unfortunately, I didn't put these in the slide, but just two real conclusions that we want to look at is looking at students who are claiming to be, students who are representing as gender queer, and also looking through this through a lens of ethnicity and just looking at some of these discrepancies. And trying to figure out what, where can we help support our students with some of these gaps that exist? Because what a specific group is really struggling with having that kind of outlier number compared to other ethnicities or other age groups, it just gives us all pause and gives us an opportunity to look and further examine that. And so we're taking that information and hoping to, as we move forward, examine that a little further with our student base. As for recommendations for school committee, first of all, just want to thank again for continuing to fund and support the implementation of the YRBS. The data is useful. We talk about it a lot amongst faculty. One of the first things we do is after we kind of have this, the following professional development, when we start the next school year, this is one of our day one, two, three meetings that we have. And we try and just get this information out there. As a faculty, it's important to kind of just see some of these trends and have just a little bit more of connection with what this data tells us, just to keep us a little bit more informed of what our students are doing. Secondly, we want to develop a better avenue to share results with the Burlington community in and outside of our schools. I think that's something that we can definitely improve on. Along those lines, develop a parent teacher education series on various topics that I think could be, allows, you know, now that everyone is comfortable with remote, you know, and virtual meetings, I think in, previously when we did this, Dr. Condi and I were discussing this the other day, attendance was really stunted just because of whatever reason people couldn't get there. Now, I think the idea of having a Google Meet about one of the, any of this content area, I think would be well attended. It's just part of our, the way we work now. And so I think we are looking to implement, implement that again. Secondly, excuse me, fourth on the list, utilize advisory and flex time to better support some of these current initiatives. As Dr. Condi mentioned, I'm involved in the development of the advisory curriculum at the high school. And advisory, you know, this was year one and we survived, and now we're trying to do it better as we get into year two and figure out ways that some of this information can filter down to students and that. And more importantly, and I think this kind of circles back to discussion about the advisory, the student advisory room, utilizing flex time, which allows for a lot of student choice to promote some of these, these different initiatives that we have. Flex time, again, we kind of brought it in midway through the year, so there's a lot of ironing out the details as we went. And we've gotten into a place where students are doing more productive things during that time now, which is great to see. I think now the next step is having faculty that have an organized vision for what we can provide students with that. We did ask students, we did some survey work towards the end of the year about content areas that they'd be interested in. And so that's going to help drive some of those decisions moving forward next year. Next, and this is something we've, we've circled back around, I think, looking to implement eventually some elementary level health education position that could provide some instruction on some of these content areas that we see being problematic, making it entirely age appropriate, but also starting those conversations earlier, because unfortunately, the students are participating in these behaviors earlier and earlier, and we're playing catch up by the time we get to sixth grade with a lot of this. Not to break down too many content areas that might be, you know, I don't want to say controversial, but talking about social media, much more about like, how do you routine, how does this become a routine in your day? Are you in control of that, of your phone, or is your phone in control of you? And just starting to talk about that and recognize some dangerous trends that we've seen. And now we have data for middle school and high school to say, hey, over time, this is what it turns into, so let's be proactive about it. And then lastly, looking to continue to add to student mental health resources, because this, this field and accessing like our different tiers of students for mental health is just, it's just. it's just growing and at a point now where, you know, we've been very lucky that we've had new hires and new positions developed, and we greatly appreciate that, but we just hope that continues moving forward, because unfortunately, you know, our students, especially now when we talk about the results of the pandemic a year later, there's, there's still areas of growth that we need to demonstrate on our end, how we can help better support these kids. It's, it's a different world than when it was three years, you know, three years ago, and I think our students feel that more than, than we recognize on a day-to-day basis. As a teacher in the building, as someone who interacts with students consistently, you know, we, we've talked about like a return to normal, but again, that, that's not happening when it comes to student lives. We're trying to kind of get it there in our own, as the teacher's end, but students are really struggling with that, and we've seen that all throughout, you know, K through twelve. So for me, that is it, and one last, again, thank you to school committee for the opportunity to talk about this and for supporting these, these kind of initiatives. Again, this data collection is extremely valuable for us as teachers to try and see a little bit more insight into what our students are doing and giving us a better idea about what we can do to better help support. Any questions?
No, I was just going to say, thank you very much, this was a very detailed report. I looked at it over the weekend, too, and found a lot of the comments you had made were, what popped into my head, and you stated them, so thanks for reconfirming I was right about how I was thinking about things. Any more quick comments?
Yeah, I, I just, likewise, I, I don't need to repeat, I, I just wanted to highlight that twenty percent of the students in our middle and high school had someone in their family or friend who died of COVID in the last, in that, at that time. And twenty, about twenty percent it was, it was like nineteen and they were.
Yeah, it was twenty-three percent for one and nineteen percent for the high school, and it was related to COVID.
So was deaths related to COVID, not just deaths?
Sorry, I pulled one of them. Reporting the experience of death of a family member or a close friend. So whether that was due COVID, I, I don't know, but.
So my comment is that we have twenty percent of our students who've experienced the death in their family or a friend, and whether it was from COVID or not. And, and that, to me, feels like a huge percentage, and I would guess that for our staff, it's probably very similar as well, and that it's been a really traumatic time in many, many ways, not, and, and, and hard in many, many ways, and I just wanted to comment on that because I don't want us to pretend it didn't happen and pretend that it's over, so we're, we're still dealing with it, and I just want to take a moment to acknowledge that.
Thanks, Ms. Simon. Ms. Monica?
Yeah, when you went over that, that statistic earlier in your presentation, I, I listened specifically for whether or not it was relative to COVID, because I, I do know people who, who died from COVID. On the other hand, I, I think that there's always a certain number of students who experience the death of usually a grandparent or, you know, someone else in their life. So I don't know what the, what the percentage would be that's COVID-related. But you did a great job with the presentation, and I, I think, I think one of the things that we need to take from it is that we've been doing this for years, right? This is not new, this is no big surprise. And things change, things improve or things get worse, I would say more have improved. But I think the consistency of it is something we all need to understand is part of kids growing up in today's world, and it isn't an easy thing to change or to fix, but it's a, it's a very good thing to be aware of. So great presentation, thank you.
Thank you, and I think what you, what you said is, is probably the most important part of this, is just having an actual awareness of, of what data is telling us. You know, we all think anecdotally about people who experience loss, and we all think about, you know, the ups and downs of stressors for middle school students, because I was a middle school student, right? And we just need to recognize that sometimes the data tells us different stories than what we remember or what we think is what's happening, or to a higher extent of the frequency of it. And I think sometimes when you look at your class and you see twenty kids there, you have twenty percent, right? Like, so four kids in there have experienced a loss during that time, and that's, that's different than looking at just the number. So it's, it's really, it helps, I think, a lot of us kind of refocus on, on some of the issues that our students are facing.
So, Matt, thank you. Again, the committee has this presentation, I think we can't stress enough the importance of teachers knowing the lives of students who are in front of them as a foundation for learning. And so I just think those, those relationships are critical, because I think we saw a video at the start of the year through the, let's talk about it, right, be aware of the single story, so we also have to make sure we don't tell ourselves a single story about, about anyone. And we just have to get to know people, so I think that's consistent. I do want the committee, again, to thank the committee, some of the resources that you're providing, you're reinstating a ninth-grade health position at the high school, so Mr. Jack, I'm very.
Very appreciative, thank you.
Very happy about that. We have a director of mental health in place as well, Ms. Concepcion will be joining the committee on meeting for June twenty-eighth, so she will do that. You'll see a lot of her efforts, again, are aligned with the efforts here, she's involved in looking at this data, and, and so we're, we're all trying to address the increasing student mental health needs that we're seeing. So it's just going to be an ongoing conversation, and again, Mr. Jack, I appreciate you involving students and having some of these conversations as well, because they can add specificity to some of the numbers that are, that are resulting there. So again, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
All right, are we going in order still?
We are going in order, and so again, the next school committee summer schedule and a training date. My suggestion, again, is what we've done in the past, is we have one meeting in July and one meeting in August. My suggestion is to look at July nineteenth or July twenty-sixth as the one date in July, or August sixteenth or August twenty-third for the one meeting in August. My belief is we will have a remote option, so if any of you are traveling, I believe we can make that arrangement, I think the state may allow that, but we'll, we'll figure all that out. But if you all could start there, and then I'll, I'll talk about the, the training date there. So July, again, is, doesn't nineteenth or twenty-sixth work?
I, I have planned vacations and surgeries for my mother, so I don't know what those are going on yet.
I don't usually state a preference, but this summer, the nineteenth would work better for me, if it works for other people.
July nineteenth, it's one day, how, how many, how long is it? What's the timeframe, the whole day or?
No, just seven at night, we'll meet at seven. These are business meetings, just one in July and one in August.
Right, but the training is.
We'll talk about the training in a minute, these are just our regular dates.
All right, I thought you were talking specifically about the training.
I was not clear, I apologize. We just need two business meetings during the summer, one in July and one in August.
Oh, okay, all right, all right. And did I hear currently that we, Ms. Monica, that you prefer July nineteenth?
Yes.
Okay, and that's fine with me for July. Anyone else?
I'm also good with that.
Yeah, nineteenth looks all right, okay, fair enough, yeah.
And then again, my suggestion for the regular business meeting in August would be August sixteenth or twenty-third.
I strongly prefer the sixteenth, if that's an option for other people.
It's my dad's birthday, but I'll make it work.
Yeah, either one's fine with me. I, I'll make up to do remote, but I'm not.
Again, we'll try to make that work. And then just in order, because our agenda's so long, I'll be sending a doodle poll out to the committee regarding a, a training opportunity in August when all five of you would be, would be available. So again, I will follow up with that, but the summer business meeting dates right now, again, are going to be July nineteenth, Kristin, and August sixteenth, so thank you.
And the training coming, does that take?
Um, we'll probably look at, what I would rather do is do, not do a whole day, just because of people's attention span, but I think if we can get a couple hours blocked out over a couple of days, I think it might be something that's worthwhile, and the school committee has committed to, given the resolution that you won't adopt.
This training?
The resolution that you adopted, I think it was two years ago, committed the committee to annual equity training to, to have those conversations. So I'll get the resolution out to you and then get a doodle poll out for that training.
Does it need to be in August?
No, but we need to commit to getting the, getting it on the schedule. So I'll get a doodle poll out to all of you and make sure that it's something that we we commit to moving forward.
Could be September.
Could be September as well, I just want to make sure it's something that we, we commit to, and if we can even have it, if it's September works well, then maybe every September we can commit to starting the year off with these conversations. So again, that it wasn't scheduled is, is my, my fault, but I just want to make sure that we, we will get it scheduled through, through a doodle poll moving, moving forward. And again, I do think it's important that, that all five of you participate. Madam Chair, with your permission, the school calendar revoke, again, another one of my recent or many mistakes. New Year's Day falls on a Sunday, and all holidays that fall on a Sunday must be observed on Monday, therefore, Monday, January second is needed as a holiday. This change will be the last day of school to Thursday, June fifteenth, and Friday, June twenty-third, with five snow days built in.
Is that because of Juneteenth?
No, it's because New Year's Day falls on Sunday.
The last, the last day of school will be June what?
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth.
June fifteenth, and with five snow days, June twenty-third.
So that means the nineteenth is a holiday, so that's.
If, if we don't have any snow days, it wouldn't impact the school year, and if we do have snow days like this year, it pushes us beyond the Monday into the following week, so.
That's, I, I got confused on the five days, and then I realized, oh, yeah, it's a holiday, and yeah, it's kind of a new holiday.
It is a new state holiday, absolutely. It's recommended that school committee vote to approve the Burlington school calendar, again, with Monday, January second as a holiday, because January first is on a Sunday, so we need to celebrate it on the Monday. There you go.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah. I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote in favor of this, even though I voted against the last calendar. But on the Good Friday issue, do we have a timeframe, like, people who are going to be out, staff that's going to be out on Good Friday, do they have to notify you with so much advance notice or not?
Ms. Monica, not by contract, so I can certainly, I can, I can make a request to staff that they're going to take Good Friday, that they notify me prior to, maybe until, maybe prior to the end of the calendar year, I could strongly encourage, I think that would give people four or five months, and then I would have a better, a better idea. That it's not the Friday before April break, and we'll, we'll see what happens, but I can certainly encourage folks to do that, but there's no requirement in the contract that I have, that there's.
Okay. But we'll, but if we ask people, I'm sure they'll, they'll be helpful.
Yes, absolutely.
Then if, if school has to be called off again, you'll have time to do it with some notice for families.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, okay. So let's take a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? I'm in favor, so of course, zero.
Thank you. Madam Chair, with your permission, I'm going to actually combine a new business item, which is the announcement of a director of special education, because I would like Christina Chicalini, who is our director of special education, moving forward to discuss the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Special Education Review that we completed this year. So I believe.
Can you take a breath and say congratulations?
Yes, I will, I will introduce, I will introduce Mrs. Chicalini now and ask the school committee to, again, support her appointment, and then I wanted to thank Mrs. Chicalini for her work this year as, as interim director of special education, is a very challenging position. It really impacts all classrooms across the district, and there's lots of staff and resources, as the committee knows, dedicated to special education, so I am very pleased with working with Christina this year, and again, strongly recommend that the school committee support her as our new director of special education. And again, I'm taking her introduction out of order so that she can discuss the Department of Special Education Review.
And I believe Ms. Monica wants to make a comment.
I do. Christina, congratulations on having what I consider the most difficult job in the entire school system, and, and also, second, maybe to the superintendent, the most important job. You, in your position, you represent a large minority of students that are really dependent on you for their future, and when a, when a parent goes to a meeting with you or other people that work for you, you either make their day or make them unhappy, very unhappy sometimes. You're the person they call when their nonverbal child is not treated nicely on a van, you're the person they call when their child is isolated, practicing alone on the other end of the football field because they can't keep up with the kids who don't have special needs. And your job has a huge impact, emotional impact, on so many parents, so many families, so many grandparents. And I just want you to know that we're here to support you, and I hope that you, I hope that you do a really, really great job, and knowing that these families, after they leave the meetings with you, all with your staff, that they go home and their problems go home with them, they, they don't get to leave them in the building. Their children are still there to have their needs and their wants, and we're counting on you, and I'm sure you're up to the task, so congratulations and thank you.
Thank you, everyone. That was really nice, thank you. So I'm, I'm very happy to accept the position of director of special education. I'm thankful for the opportunity to continue my role. This past year, I did a lot of listening to teachers, administrators, and parents. I, along with district administrator, administrators, looked at and reviewed data. We also had a program review, which I'll discuss in a second. And as I listened and reviewed data, I began to understand the difficulties and impact that COVID had over the last two years at every grade level, and I'm hoping to support everyone in providing the best opportunities possible for our students moving forward. So with that, I'd like to talk about the tiered focus monitoring that the Department of Education just had, went through for Burlington. This year, when we went through our three-year cycle of our tiered focus monitoring, what it is really is district and charter schools are reviewed every three years through tiered focus monitoring, through the DESI. This review process emphasizes elements most tied to student outcomes and alternates the focus of each review. This year selected requirements from the Federal Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, the federal regulations promulgated under the Act of thirty-four CFR, and the Massachusetts Boards of Education Special Education Regulations, or six oh three C M R twenty-eight, were reviewed. Although the final report is not complete, our exit meeting revealed that we did very well as a district. We only had one finder, finding, indicator SE seven out of about twelve criteria titles. This was for age of majority. The files they reviewed that elicited the finding were completed, finding were completed, so. that elicited the finding were completed, finding, were completed. So the, the indicator itself was done. However, because of the pandemic, the timelines for student signatures were off or not completed on or by their 18th birthday. So I promise you, the next pandemic, we will do better.
[laughing]
Considering that our, that during our last review, we had seven findings and we had a pandemic in the middle of this one, I would consider having one finding to be good. So thank you. Any questions?
Thank you very much. That was very well said. Anyone else want to ask any questions or make a quick comment?
We're trying to keep the meeting going, so I don't have a lot to say, but I know it was a huge thing to go through this tiered focus monitoring and it is wonderful to hear that of the 12 categories, there was only one and it was a paperwork issue that was difficult, you know, during COVID. And I, I'm delighted that you're at the helm and, and, you know, look forward to continued good reports. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is, you gonna move on to equity or something different?
No, I think that we're going to try to stick to the agenda as written, other than with the student participants. Again, so I want to just thank Mrs. Chicalini and as Ms. Simon said, recognize that one finding is, is a significant achievement. And we are shortchanging the amount of time that staff put into this tiered program review. So I apologize for that. With that, the first item in the equity section of our agenda this evening is student program feedback. So with that, I'll turn it back to Mr. Porch and for that. And Mr. Porch, I'm not sure if that was inclusive of our earlier conversation.
Okay, so I think it was the program feedback that we already got. Mr. Larkin, am I missing something?
He's up.
I'm not sure exactly what you're referring to.
The agenda item was student program feedback and it might, might have been my error. Was that for the advocacy room? Did we already?
Yes, yes.
I double put it, so my, my, my error. So with that, I know Patrick, we've talked briefly, just a COVID update. I know that we, we are maybe just, we've given the numbers every week, but if you could just repeat those for the committee, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, sure. Going back the last few weeks, we've had, the week of May 21st, we had 55 cases. That was a cut in half. The week of May 28th, it's about 25. Last week, we're at 13 and we're less than 13 right now, a couple of days into the week. So I mean, I just think like the state, the numbers are down. We're seeing the same thing in Burlington. There are still a few cases here and there. Again, it's reported cases, so that's the caveat. But we do feel like things have scaled back from what we were feeling back, you know, April and May. So that's a good thing. And we'll be keeping the same kind of protocols in place that we have right now going into the summer program and hope that we don't see any spikes along the way between now and the fall.
Again, with six days left, we are trying to get through, but we feel like we're in a good place. And hopefully next year, we won't be announcing weekly COVID numbers. And, but again, I think that staff, principals, everybody has been doing a great job managing, managing the situation. And again, I, because of our agenda length, I, I'm going to shortchange everyone's effort this year. I'll spend more time at our next meeting doing that. So Patrick, thank you. Again, Madam Chair, may I move on to Facilities and Finance?
Sure.
Okay. Bob, just, we have Fox Hill Building Committee meeting tomorrow, but I'm not sure if you just want to make that announcement.
I will make the announcement. We do have a Fox Hill School Building Committee meeting tomorrow at 7:00 PM. It's available on WebEx and also will be in person here at the high school. We are discussing and looking to finalize the OPM, which is the Owner's Project Manager, the RFS, which is a Request for Services. So we may not complete that tomorrow, but the intent is before July 14th, we do need to finalize that and send it off to MSBA because we do want to move forward with hiring an OPM soon.
Ms. Monica has a quick question.
Bobby, once you have that all prepared and the deadline's July 14th, to whom does it go? Does it just go to MSBA or do you put it out like, you know, like a bid?
To the chair. So on July 14th, MSBA has to receive what they're calling a draft for their review. We have to advertise it in the Central Register, which is a Massachusetts publication website, by July 28th. And then we would be receiving any questions back to us and bid packages back to us August 17th.
So how much time is there for the companies that might want it to prepare their presentations to us?
Well, we're given notice now that to expect and start looking for our RFS to be available. But we would advertise it for two weeks.
Okay.
In the Central Register and on Combi.
So my, my recollection is that, and I don't know if this will happen this time or if things have changed, but the last time we did this, we got some pretty fancy, you know, like books practically from these companies, marketing really, showing everything they've done and their projects. So are you expecting something like that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And then, once we get that, then, is, now I think some of these things have changed. Is it the building committee that makes the decision on who is hired? Or is it the school committee ultimately that has the contract?
This would be the building committee. So the Fox Hill School Building Committee would vote and make that decision.
So that's different from what it used to be. Yeah. Anyway, doesn't matter. And so on a timeline, when do you expect that we will have hired an OPM?
So August 17th, we will receive bids. There'll be sealed bids and we'll open them up at a predefined time, probably 1:00. By September 7th, so about three and a half weeks later, we have to select. If we choose to select somebody and then send that recommendation to MSBA by September 7th. We are scheduled right now tentatively for the October 3rd OPM panel from MSBA. So on October 3rd, if we have all of our information in, checked all of our boxes, and have selected an OPM, hopefully October 3rd, they would vote, MSBA, they would approve our recommendation. And then potentially as early as October 4th, we could make a contract and move forward with an OPM.
Great, thank you. Next is EHS update.
Thank you. Short update. In previous conversations, we had discussed the feasibility study. And then there was a recommendation to at least consider forming a school building committee for Burlington High School. I think at the recommendation of this board, I would also be in favor of starting that committee or at least assembling that committee. So I think that I have provided you in a previous meeting, the template from MSBA on their school building committee and the members that they've selected. I don't know if the board believes that that is the same model that we want to follow or if there's any discussions that need to happen on how we would choose any candidates or members for that committee.
Thank you.
Again, Madam Chair, my sort of recommendation would be instead of reinventing the process, we really try to follow the MSBA processes as closely as we could without sort of including them as a partner. But they put a lot of thought and effort into sort of the mechanisms of this and I think they're, they're well thought out. So that would be my, my recommendation. There's no reason for us to, again, recreate.
Thank you.
Ms. Bond, I would like to, I agree, I think that makes sense. And I have this memory that you sent us a list, the template already, is that correct?
I believe so.
I wasn't sure how, where to find it. So what I would add, request is if you could resend to all of us and then we would have a chance to look at it before our June 28th meeting. And then we could discuss it at the June 28th meeting and decide if we wanted to do it then or if we didn't want to do it then. But we wouldn't have to do it then, but then that would be, I would like to see that on the agenda with us having a chance to look at the list again. So we can think about, because we did add a couple of positions, like the special ed teacher, for example, to the Fox Hill list. So, thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Simon. And Ms. Monaco?
I'm finding the Fox Hill Building Committee to be very atypical because all the building committees I've ever been part of, or I even Googled a bunch of them currently, they all have one or two school committee members on them instead of a whole bunch. And I would like to suggest that when we put the high school building committee together, that we actually split up. I'm happy to volunteer for the high school committee and move on from the Fox Hill committee when that time comes. But I just, I think the building committee, the purpose of it is to have various entities from around town represented. And I don't feel as though having the entire school committee on it is, I, I just don't think it should be that way. So I'm volunteering to move on when the time comes.
Thank you, Ms. Monaco. Let's just move, we can talk about, you know, the building committees later, but it's getting late and I want to move on to the next items. Thank you. Next is the monthly financials. Ms. Koshen?
So all of our accounts are in good standing. The school lunch, you'll notice, has a rather large balance. The SSO, the seamless summer option that allowed for us to have free meals for everyone, is not currently going to be renewed after 6:30. So our reimbursement rates for next year will, at this time, won't be as high. And also with like the rising costs of food and shortages and all that, I think we're really sort of need to conservative go through this next year and maybe even take a look at prices because I think this will work.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone have any questions or comments on Ms. Koshen's quick presentation?
Good job.
Thank you. And thank you for being quick. All right, let's move on to the next document on the agenda is salary agreements, the units A and D.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. You had the number sent to you in your packet. And the, I gave you printed copies of both unit A and unit B. These reflect the tentative agreement of the 2% COLA for fiscal '22, our current fiscal year, and a 3% in fiscal '23, and a 3% in fiscal '24. Again, those are the cost of living increases. You're not voting on the entire agreement. We still need to sort of finish up some language. This is just the school committee approving the financial part of the agreement. And this would allow us to print letters for all the employees that we need to do by contract by June, June 15th. And instead of just printing a letter and then having to reprint a letter with the dollar amount, and your vote tonight will allow us just to get the letters out with the correct dollar amount tomorrow. So it's my recommendation that you, again, approve the salary agreements that the committee has reached with the union's negotiating team. And again, it took a lot of time. I want to thank Ms. Simon, Ms. Monaco for their time on the bargaining committee. And recommend that you approve both of these agreements. Some moved?
I'll second that. And any more discussion? All right. Then, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I'm in favor, 4-0.
Again, thank you very much. And again, thank you to the negotiating team of the PEA for, for all of their efforts and look forward to having a full ratification as soon as possible.
That would be good. And since we went out of order, it's new business and we'll go to retirements?
Thank you. I just wanted to highlight for the committee that the retirements this year, so in your packet, again, we have Ivana Jantile at the high school, Catherine McCarthy, again, at the high school, special educator, Sharon Johnson-Hilts, Marsha Murphy, both special educators in the middle school, Susan Rogers, our theme teacher, and Teresa Kelly, who is a physical education teacher in the middle school, Lisa Gogan, grade three teacher at Francis Wyman, Linda Bannon, again, physical education teacher at Memorial, and Deb Dresser, our principal at Memorial from two years ago. This year, she was serving as our Director of Recovery. She did a wonderful job for us. She is retiring as well. So I just want to thank them all for their service. I just wanted to point out, at the start of every year, I asked the staff to stand up if they've been in Burlington zero to five years and then six to 10 and 11 through 15. And I still feel guilty because I, I had stopped, I think, at 35 to 40. And I missed Sharon Johnson-Hilts giving her the opportunity to stand because I just didn't think anyone had been in the district that long. But she is retiring, I believe, after 48 years of service in Burlington. And the only person I found who maybe has served longer, and I'm saying maybe, is Jim Curtin because our records aren't, are very good. So again, just to, to Mrs. Johnson-Hilts, just again, what an incredible accomplishment. And to all our retirees, I just wish them the best of luck and just a huge amount of gratitude. So Sharon, again, I wanted to single you out because I, I made, I made that mistake at one of our openings. So, so she'd be standing now alone at 48.
She was a great hockey ball too.
Thank you, Dr. Conti. Next on the agenda is administrative stipends.
Yep. Again, we are having to re-vote because of my, my error last time. So you've already approved these stipends. I just gave you the wrong dollar amounts. So the homeschooling coordinator dollar amount should have been $3,000 and the scheduling coordinator stipend should have been $6,500. So my recommendation is that you approve these dollar amounts for the stipends that you've already approved that I gave you the incorrect number for.
Can we have a motion as Dr. Conti has presented the numbers tonight? Still moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I'm in favor, 4-0.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next two agenda items are. Are first readings. So we will get back to them in terms of a second reading. The cybersecurity policy is a first reading, was introduced to you by the Towns ISAC Committee. And again, this language, Bob, reflects that, that language that the selectmen have adopted as well. Is that correct?
Correct. The ISAC Committee worked with it. Select Board has adopted it and then presented to you all at a previous meeting. And this was their recommendation. So I just wanted you to accept this as a, as a, as a first reading. And then if you have questions, you can certainly forward them to me prior to the, to the 28th when, again, we'll ask you for a second reading.
Thank you. And next on the agenda is the public school, Burlington Public Schools' wellness policy, first reading?
Again, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm getting a text that I made another mistake, so I will address my other mistake in a second. The wellness policy was something that the Wellness Committee had created prior to COVID that we never got a chance to bring to the committee. So we are going to bring the Wellness Committee, to the committee as a first reading. The things that I wanted to highlight for you in the Wellness Committee is connected to the safe routes to school. So the safe routes to school, Bob, wanted to add language to our wellness policy. And if you look, the first page of the wellness policy, the safe routes to school gives you three options for language. So we, Terry included those in your packet as one, two, and three. So if you could review both the wellness policy in the first reading and then decide as a committee which of the three safe routes to school, Bob, any one of those three are acceptable? Bob, any one of those three are acceptable to the Safe Roots to School group?
I'm looking right now, but... I was under the assumption, and I had believed, that all three need to be adopted.
That all three need to be adopted?
That's what I believe, but I will follow up and double-check on that.
So again, as this is the first reading, I just ask you to, to, again, look at this. We will get you an answer as to whether we need all three or we just need to select the one. But that's why there are three at the beginning of the wellness policy. I just wanted to point that out to you, that goes up from the Safe Roots to School group. Ms. Simon, do you have that?
Is it the?
It's page twenty-two in the packet.
Sorry, is that?
And through the chair, Dr. Conti?
Oh, okay. I see it's a separate document. Got it, okay. I will look that up. I do have some comments and questions, but I know we're trying to wrap things up and where this is a first reading. Who should I send those questions, maybe to you and to you? And should I send them to Mr. Jacklin as well, or just to you two first?
We'll forward them to Mr. Jacklin, so he can certainly get them to us.
Not, not big things, just clarifications. Thank you.
No, thank you, Ms. Simon.
Through the chair, if I could just add, I did just double-check, and Dr. Conti is correct. It's one of the three. I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, Mr. Kinnon. The next thing is old business. Dr. Conti, school committee support?
Yes, so I just wanted to thank Kristen Danny for her minute-taking this year. She really stepped in, and, and again, I think we have one more meeting to, to thank you more officially on, but just wanted to make sure I did that. The committee, we posted the position, so between now and our next meeting, I need to make a decision to have, we need to have minutes taken. But I also believe there's a need for more support with some of the work that we have to do as a committee. So just want to talk to the committee about putting together a job description. So I'm going to be sending that to you all and getting your feedback, because doing minutes is one thing, supporting the committee, but doing that and a full-time job is heroic. So thank you, Kristen, for all of your, for all of your efforts. And again, so I think the, the school committee support, you'll be receiving, again, a job description from me and some of the support that you want to see outside of the minute-taking. Again, we have minute-taking that's also required for the Fox Hill Building Committee. And if we put together a high school building committee, there'll be minute-taking there. So there'll be, there's going to be lots of work moving forward, and we just need to, I think, post a more manageable job. And so I think that's the feedback that we are getting.
All right, thank you. Any other comments or questions? I'm definitely need a row looking.
Yes, I would agree. And then there was a question, again, that was brought up regarding the Massachusetts Fair Share discussion. In speaking with Darren, the committee can certainly take a position if they so choose. Some of our neighboring school committees have taken a position. Both Lexington School Committee and the Arlington School Committee have taken a position in support of the Massachusetts Fair Share. And again, if, if you want to discuss that further this evening, again, it's, it's your agenda item, and so I think that would make sense. I don't want you to feel rushed in the discussion. I think if you reach agreement tonight, that's great. If you need to discuss it tonight, and if we need to extend the conversation to the next business meeting, again, it's really your parameter. But the agenda item is on at your, at your demand.
And I know we got, you know, descriptions earlier, but I, if I could read something that printed. So, "A yes vote supports amending the state constitution to create an additional income tax of four percent for income over one million in addition to the existing five percent rate income tax and dedicate revenue to education and transportation purposes. A no vote opposes amending the state constitution to create an additional income tax of four percent for income over one million dollars, thereby maintaining the existing flat rate income tax of five percent with revenue dedicated to the state's general fund." So that kind of simplifies things, I think. So I don't know.
Do we go on the ballot?
Correct. It will be on the ballot within the box.
Do, I'll make a motion to support it. Second.
Okay, any other discussion?
Again, we don't want to take a long time. I think that our flat income tax rate is not very equitable in the state, and I think this is one way to do that, and to raise funds that are crucially needed for education primarily, and also other areas like transportation. So I support it.
Okay.
I agree with that.
All right, thank you. And you too. So all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
And I'm in favor, four zero zero, to support.
To endorse it, yes.
Okay.
Again, Madam Chair, thank you, and we can certainly work on a press release if that's something the committee would like us to do. And I'm sorry to just backtrack to one other thing. I forgot, again, two other stipends. I apologize. That was the text I just received. We have a CHINS coordinator stipend at three thousand dollars. This is another administrative stipend. And we have a grading coordinator at twenty-five hundred. So if the school committee could make a motion to adopt the CHINS coordinator and a grading coordinator at the dollars mentioned, again, these would be cleaning up some of the cleanup that we need to do.
What's a grading for?
So moved.
They work to get the report cards all processed?
Second.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I'm in favor, four zero zero.
Move we go into executive session?
Thank you. So I was just going to state that we do have a need for executive session. The Mass General, under the Mass General laws, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A, subsection to conduct collective bargaining sessions, teachers' union grievances. So I'm going to take roll call to go into executive session. Do you need a second? You made a motion?
So what is it?
I have a second.
And let's take a roll call, Ms. Simon?
Aye.
Mr. Porch?
Aye.
Ms. Monaco?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. So we will go into executive session, and the school committee will return to public session for the purpose of adjournment only. Thank you.